...to do that between now and 3:30, we're a couple of minutes late getting started. So Commissioners, I think one question we need to ask before we get started with our first applicant is just how we want to do this. So this is an open public meeting, so we can do that here in the chambers, or we could also do the interviews in our conference room behind us. So what's the preference of the board? Either way, I was actually envisioning we would do it in the conference room, it's a little bit less formal, but it will be an open meeting, either location. Sometimes have closed sessions back here, but this would be an open meeting. Do you argue one way or the other?
I'm good either way.
I'm good either way.
Yeah, I don't think we're on, but try to turn it on so we're not on.
Yeah, we're not.
We're not. Okay, so I mean, for me, it's more comfortable for the one that's doing the interview to be back there. It's a lot more comfortable setting. I just want to make sure that everybody that's here that wants to be there, you know, has the ability to go back there and be there, which we have before. We've done interviews with various people back there, so as long as anybody else is doing it.
So it's totally, obviously, it's up to the board. Obviously, additional people come back there, it can get crowded. I don't know if this is the long process. I don't know who else is going to be joining in at the time. It's just, just an option.
That's a good point. I bet it'll probably be Mr. Rice. I'd be surprised if other folks from the public show up, but let's keep an eye on it. If we do run out of room, we'll move it back out here. But I think, I think we can probably have the Commissioners and the folks we're interviewing in the public. So let's do this. We're gonna just meet in the conference room right behind us here, so give us just a minute to get set up, and then Ian, back up in there first, our first person we're gonna interview. So give us just a minute, and then get started. And Ian, you're welcome to introduce that one. I often just ask, we're gonna ask every applicant, not surprisingly, why are you interested in serving on the Greenways Committee? So why don't you just kind of talk about that, and feel free to kind of share any kind of background, you know, related things that you'd like to share with the board. Probably a couple of other questions we'll share.
Thank you. First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. And I love having the opportunity to share my passion for parks and greenways and recreation in general, and basically outdoor space as an amenity and, I guess you could call it the right for citizens. And I've been a passionate advocate for greenways for a long time, but I also am very interested in parks altogether, because I think getting people outside enhances not only physical health, but I think it enhances emotional and mental health as well. And the closer people are to a park, the more likely they are to use it. And I just feel like it's one of those things that I have loved to do, to be in a park setting or outside with my own kids, and I feel like it's something that I hope for, for every citizen of Buncombe County. And I've been a resident of Buncombe County for a long time, and I feel like it's something that we really need to build and enhance and bring to as many citizens as possible. I don't know if I can say that any better, but it's what I feel. And it's something I've been involved in for a very long time. So I want to be part of this because there, at one time, there was an advisory board, and it got disbanded. And then I was involved with greenways, and so really didn't think a whole lot about an advisory board, because I felt like we were sort of doing that in a way. And as I've moved through life, I see how important it is for citizens to be able to talk to Commissioners and to elected officials about the need for things in the community that enhance a better way of life. And so I feel like advisory boards are important altogether anyway, but I think they're especially important to me in this particular area. So that's why I'm here, and I'd like to be on this new and exciting advisory board.
Excellent. All right. So another one of the questions we wanted to ask all of our applicants is just, other applicants, when you think about this board, what would you really hope to see and accomplish? It's a new board, although as you said, we used to have an advisory board to help create the original master plan, but what do you hope it'll accomplish over the next two years?
Well, I see the advisory board as a group of people that are liaison between Commissioners and citizens. And I see this group going out and finding out what it is that the citizens of Buncombe County are interested in, and how an enhanced park system could be helpful to them. And so I see them, that board coming back to the Commissioners and reporting on what they hear from citizens, but also taking to the citizens the feeling of the board, the board of Commissioners, as how you see parks and greenways and recreation in general enhancing the life of the citizens too. So I see it as a two-way street, and I hope that it could work that way, as it has in other places I know.
So the other question, and I'm sure a lot of folks are already doing this value, but we're gonna ask each, just talk a little bit about their experience in greenways. Obviously, you did very well in the first. Talk about that.
Sure. I moved here to Buncombe County in 1975, and had one child when I first moved here, and then had two more. And I just loved being able to take my kids outside. And there was no place to ride bikes. There was no place to really take a stroller, for that matter, when I moved here. And I just found that, I came from Chapel Hill, and there were lots of places to walk and ride bikes in Chapel Hill. Although, you know, even that was limited back in those days. And so I've really felt since then, it's just something that I believe I could have used, and if I was like other people, then, you know, other people might have that too. And when I had the chance to serve on the Greenway Commission, it was put together in 2008, really relished the chance to have some input into the development of the county master plan for greenways. And then we presented it to county Commissioners in 2012, and the Commissioners adopted the plan. And, but unfortunately, there wasn't a lot of money to keep going at that point. And so it kind of went away. Or it didn't go away, the plan was still there, but it wasn't really acted on. And so that was when both of us got together and said, let's start working on seeing how we can get this in front of the citizens, in front of the Commissioners, the new Commissioners. And it was some action going. And so I've been involved with Connect Buncombe, it was Friends of Connect Buncombe, because that was the name of the plan. Then we shortened it to Connect Buncombe. And I've been involved with them ever since we got together. I'm not on the board anymore, because we had terminations, but still very, very, very involved. But I'm also quite an advocate for parks, and I did have the opportunity to serve on the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Authority. It's a statewide board, and we reviewed applications from municipalities and counties all across the state, and looked at, and there was money from, originally from the real estate transfer taxes, and that went away, and it was actually an appropriation. But we, we had X number of dollars to give away to the municipalities, and they were matching ones. And it was really eye-opening to see what other areas were doing, and the passion that they had for both parks and open space, and for greenways, and all across the state. And it was, it was, I loved it. It was a great opportunity. And so I just, I pretty much stayed involved as much as I can with advocating for parks and greenways. I have a little booklet, and I don't know whether anybody would be interested, but it's put out by the Trust for Public Land, and it talks about the importance of parks to the wellbeing of citizens. And I didn't bring enough, but I didn't want to act like a school teacher and give out textbooks.
Well, there's not a test.
All right. So Ian, we've got just a minute left. Are there any quick questions from any Commissioners that only we didn't already bring up?
No, just so you can mention parks enough for this Commissioner to get up. It's probably on the first interview.
All right. Ian, do you have anything?
Thank you.
We've got out of, we're gonna add, because these are gonna be real quick questions.
Okay.
We've got a bunch to go through.
No, I understand. I've got 25 applicants for nine positions.
Well, thank you for everything you're doing, and thanks for putting yourself forward for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey.
Hi.
Jennifer, hey, how are you? Good to see you. Thanks for coming to talk to us.
Thank you.
Pretty excited.
My office is like 35 degrees, so.
Jennifer, thanks for coming to talk to us today. We appreciate your interest in the Greenways Committee. So we've got 10 minutes, and not a lot of time. We've got a lot of stuff to talk to this afternoon. But we wanted to ask each of the applicants to just tell us a little bit about, about yourself, and particularly why you're interested in serving on our Greenways and Parks Committee.
My name is Jennifer Buznick. I've been in Asheville now five and a half years. Moved here from the Raleigh area, I was there for about three years. Before that, I was in California. I lived abroad for a little bit. I was in Peaceport. I'm interested in serving on this board particularly, because I'm a runner. I run marathons. I have a road bike, which I haven't been able to use much since I moved to Asheville. I haven't given up yet. I also have a mountain bike, too. But when I was in Raleigh, they did a really good job with their greenways. They just like really connecting them to like the Mountains to Sea Trail, and my parents live in Clayton, which is on the outskirts. And Clayton got a big Department of Transportation bond to like bill on like 33 miles, and it connects to like Raleigh, and it connects to the Mountains to Sea Trail. And I think that there's, we're able to do something like that here. I live down in Arden, so like there's really nowhere for me to run. I have to get my car ready and go out to run. But like, I know I talked to somebody from DOT a couple of years ago, and he said that they had planned like eight miles of sidewalk to go from the airport to downtown eventually, but like it's still looking good. So I would like to be able to like see something like that come to fruition here in the Asheville area, because I work at the mall, and I know that there's like an avenue for like people to like park there, and then they could like get on the greenway, and they could like go over to like Azalea Park in Highland, and then come back and do on their bikes and stuff like that. So I just feel like there's a lot of opportunity here in the area, and with the growth that's coming, getting members for people to run on the sidewalk, and run with my dog and bike. We all have our life drive bikes and stuff on, so.
Okay, great. So one of the other questions we want to ask each of the applicants is just, you know, when you think of this as a new committee, so what do you hope it will accomplish over the next several years?
Well, I'm assuming you have some sort of like three or five year plan or five to six. I mean, I would really like to see it like invite people to be outdoors more, and to like use the parks. Like I would really like to see it connect to the parks in some way, and also like invite local artists to submit their art for the greenways. Like I know in Clayton, where my parents live, they have this thing called the Butterfly Garden, and it has like all these butterflies on there. They were able to get like young school kids to do that. And I just think that there's such a good opportunity for us here to be able to break that, because we do live in Nashville, you know, the Rock District, where people like to go, and they like to paint, show off their work and stuff like that. So I think that there's a good opportunity for us to be able to use this committee.
Awesome. And I think you touched on this a little bit, but just any other kind of, you know, any other kind of experience you want the Commissioner to think about in terms of your role on serving this?
Well, I worked for the US Senate for three years. I was a virtual Senator, but I was staying when I lived in California. And I ran for office in 2012 for the North Carolina House. And my background is in government and politics. So I have like served on other boards before, not any of them in Buncombe County. I was also the Vice Chair of the San Diego, Downtown San Diego Economic Development Committee, as they were building up the downtown area there. So I feel like I have the experience to like bring to this board, and like listen to people talk about like they would like in their community, and then also to working with like the community partners for their sponsorships, and being with that because it gives them money and things like that.
Awesome. Commissioners, any other questions that y'all would like to ask? One of the ones, so we do have, you know, we do have this Greenways Master Plan, and I just, is it something you've had much time to look at yet, or familiarize yourself with it all?
But I have looked at, I looked at the Raleigh plan, I looked at the Greensboro plan, I looked at the Clayton plan, just to kind of get some ideas of like what I would like to bring to the board. I have looked at the plan, like I live down off Henderson Road, so I've looked at the plan for like Jack Lechner Park, and like some of the other new things that are coming into like my area, but I haven't looked at like this specific like Greenways.
Understood, understood. All right, well, we've got just a, you know, a couple more minutes. Is there anything else that you think we ought to know about this relevant to this committee?
I just feel like the South Asheville area is like really underrepresented, as far as like any sort of like elected officials, and as far as hearing their voice heard. And so it'd be nice to have somebody from that area represented on like a new board or commission, especially as we're like building up like the new park down there, and like continuing to build on to like Julian. And I know like Sierra Nevada has like a bunch of ideas with like their greenways, and they have these beautiful like bike racks up there that like no one can get to. So it'd be nice to be able to like connect something to them. And there's so much like trafficking growth going down in that area now, that it would be, it'd be nice to be able to have some form of representation.
That's great. We have, you know, in terms of creating this new committee, we have put some thought into trying to structure it, so we will get good representation from all parts of the county. So that is something that we're definitely very interested in seeing as good geographic representation. So that's a great, great point. All right, well, we've got a lot of folks. This is a board that a lot of people are interested in, so we've got a lot of great applicants. So thank you so much for coming in to talk to the board today.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Nice to meet everybody.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. So we're just answering your questions as you walk in. These are the districts as they exist today.
Okay.
So district two is your first one.
Clarifying, what's what?
Susan.
All right, Susan, thank you so much for coming in to talk to us today about our Parks and Greenways and Recreation Advisory Board, which of course was, I'm sure you know, was a new board that we recently constituted. So we've got a lot of interest in it. We've got just a few minutes to talk today, because we've got so many different things to talk here. But we wanted to start off by asking you to just, just tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you're particularly interested in serving on this board.
Yeah. So I work for Mountain True, Environmental Ethics in the Rockville County, if you're familiar. And we do a lot of work on land use and planning, multimodal transportation, greenways, et cetera. And so that is an issue area that I have been learning about in my role with Mountain True, which has been fun and educational. I am a cyclist, just recreationally, personally. And so being able to see kind of both sides of the like how you use the greenways and land, I guess more of that way, and also how organizations or government entities make decisions about how to create, or expand, or use, or make accessible greenways and parks too. But I've had more use of experience with the greenways. Had to me has just been fun and interesting. And so I would enjoy the opportunity to be a part of a team that's helping look at, you know, what kinds of decisions can we, should we make? What sorts of competing priorities do we need to balance to try and get more access to these resources for a larger percentage of our community? I think that's kind of, I think that's my best answer to that question?
Pretty good, pretty good. All right. All right. And, yeah, so thinking about this new, this new advisory board, what are you hoping, are some of the key things that we'll accomplish over the next several years?
I don't know much about the state of whether there is a master plan for greenways that the county kind of owns or manages, and then also how that dovetails with the management of parks and recreation opportunities. So it would be hard for me to say like, I think you should, we should do this, or this board should accomplish this. But I do think figuring out sort of what those priorities are, either it's creating a plan, or we have one, but we need to implement different pieces of it, and we need community support for that. Yeah, I would enjoy sort of seeing where that process is, and how I could help move those things forward.
So, and if any folks have any like follow-up questions, I think we're prepared to just like, or this is all kind of new to us on this new committee, so feel free to just jump in. So one follow-up question would be, so we do, we do have a, we do have a master plan, and it's, you know, it's, you know, got, how many miles are in it, Josh? Like thousands of miles, right?
Mine is.
It's a very long, it's a very long-term, you know, kind of concept. We're only a bit working on, you know, some of those. But we do have a plan. So are you, you know, are you, what level of familiarity do you have with some of kind of like the more near-term projects that the county, along with some of the partners we have, have been working on? Like, are you familiar with some of those we're kind of trying to get done, you know?
Not especially. I volunteered with Connect Us, or Connect Buncombe, because I'm backdoor neighbors with Robbie Sweetser, who's been driving that for us for a long time, so he's roped me into volunteering on different events. So I know a little bit about some of the ones that, you know, we're trying, y'all are trying to get in place. And then I was at a city, STC committee meeting not long ago, where David Nutter was presenting a plan on, well, it wasn't a plan exactly, it was sort of a report or summary on how the I-26 project dovetails or doesn't with various greenway priorities and projects that are coming down the pike. And that was super interesting to see that sort of overlay of the opportunities that the I-26 project creates for new greenways, or fulfilling this sort of dreamed-up greenways. So those are kind of two of the places that I've bumped into some of the current goals and projects, but I would say I'm not especially familiar with them.
Great.
Good question. I'd love to hear more about your thoughts about how to increase good access and utilization of parks and recreation sources for more folks and more different kinds of things. Anything that you see in here or other communities that you think, oh, that's a really cool way to do that?
Gosh, I mean, events is like the sort of easy assumption, I feel like, because it gets more attention to stuff. But, you know, I almost feel like, because it's harder for people to get to them, creative ways to hit like mailboxes or doors, or people just to know what the options are that are near them. Because I'm surprised when I drive around that I'll find the parks that I didn't know existed, that because they're signed, they're clearly public, publicly accessible, and are not private land. But I would think starting, starting from that place to figure out how we help people find out that these exist. Because you can sort of trumpet all the like amenities or whatever, but this sense of like, this is public land, and it's yours, and you can, you can play in it. I think, I think lots of people don't know that. But as far as how, you know, it's kind of the classic like marketing stuff, right? So social media stuff, and, you know, op-eds, and the ways you try and make noise in a very noisy world.
So one other question we haven't asked, but it's still, we're still early in this , we should throw it in if we have time. So, you know, we've got this plan, it envisions a lot of greenways, you know, all over the county, you know, in the future, interconnected as much as possible. So with all these different ideas out there, with finite resources, finite bandwidth as an organization, like, how do you think we should be kind of working to establish priorities, right? Because we have to choose, otherwise we'll, we don't focus on some things, we'll just not get anything actually out on the ground. So how do you think the county ought to focus on prioritizing projects?
I'm a little slow on that, because like one thing I think the county needs, which is not surprising to anyone, is more sort of transparency and community involvement in decision-making process, right? But then for the efficiency side of things, it's easier to just make decisions and move forward. So that's a tricky spot to be. What would a truth be? So, you know, trying to get a sense of what priorities there are among the community members is of course the dream, but then of course, if they're competing, it's hard to ask everyone to get a representative, you know, sample or what have you. But trying to find some, some ways to get some input. And also, I do, you know, have an MPA, I sort of lean into the like, let's just make some decisions, right? Because if we could have some priorities and push them forward, and get people excited about those, you know, then you're building some trust that like you're gonna keep making more good decisions, and make more stuff happen that people are gonna be excited about. So finding that delicate balance.
Yeah, those are great, great points. So we're, we just have a little bit of time to talk to each person this afternoon. So is there anything else you want to let us know?
We got time left, I'll.
Yeah, we've got, you can ask.
Sure, a quick question. You know, Greenways receives most of the conversations that Buncombe County has wrong. And I'd like to hear what you think about parks and other opportunities for recreation.
Yeah. It was interesting to me when I was filling out the application, looking up like where the actual Buncombe County owned parks are. I have not spent time in any of them, and that was a surprise to me, which shouldn't have been clearly, but it was. And I don't know if that's because they're further remote, and I live in North Asheville, or just because Richmond Hill is closer to me, and the Mountains to Sea Trail is closer to me. But anyway, I like the idea of having parks that are accessible, and that feel friendly, and like good spaces I could take. Like I mentioned in the application, I've got a little sister through the Big Brother and Big Sister Program. And we've been hanging out at Carrier Park up here recently, but again, city-owned and not county. And she lives out in Camber, so, you know, it could be that when it warms up, she and I'll spend more time figuring out what parks are available around there. But I play in public spaces, but I have not spent time in the Buncombe County parks. And I don't know if that is because I didn't know about them before, or because there were other easier and like more well-known options available to me, so that I didn't keep looking. And then I'm not much like, I'm not going to play basketball, like some of the stuff that I do is more in the woods anyway. But I definitely believe in like active lifestyles, and people having the ability to go play outside in a park that feels safe, and feels friendly, and has, you know, families and kids running around. I love that that is possible for people.
Great. Susan, thank you so much for your interest in serving on this board. And so we're gonna be interviewing folks today. No, we're actually, we're not scheduled to vote tonight, are we? Or are we? Or we never decided that, you know, we hadn't decided that.
Yeah.
But it will be fairly soon.
With all the citizens.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, pleasure. Thanks for having me.
This is.
Hey, Sam.
How are you guys?
Hey, really good. Good to see you.
How you doing?
Sam.
Nice to meet you.
All right, you have your permission here from our staffs and public. We got it all right here. Of course, they're great. Thanks for, thanks for coming to talk to us about our new Parks and Greenways and Recreation Advisory Board.
Thank you for inviting me.
We've got just a few minutes to talk, because we're talking to a lot of folks this afternoon.
Yes, sir.
But we wanted to start off by just having you tell us a little bit about why you're interested in serving on this board.
Okay. Well, originally, I was born and raised in Tallahassee.
Oh, lucky, all right.
And my wife and I got married there, moved up here for her to follow her passion in mental health counseling. I got a degree, a master's from Little Ryan. But while growing up, I was very active in parks and recreation. And that's, that's a big thing with me, specifically And that's, that's a big thing with me, specifically baseball. I'm a assistant coach at Irwin. And so when I saw this opportunity, Jeff Knoblet, I'd saw that he had posted, he and I met while I was employed at Bob Lewis Ballpark over in the Indian Canler District. And, you know, for me, it's just a matter of giving back to parks and rec in general, whether it's here or wherever life takes me, but giving back to what helped me grow as an individual. It really directed my path. I graduated from Florida State with a bachelor's in sport management. And I worked at D-Bat Asheville for a couple of years as a general manager. I was at Bob Lewis Ballpark, and now I'm an assistant coach at Irwin. And so just being able to do whatever I can to get back to baseball and, and a broader sense, that community aspect of things, you know, high school ball, travel ball, sometimes it's more money-based, but Parks and Rec is more, in my eyes, is more, hey, everybody get involved. You know, we want to be able to offer something to the kids who can't pay the thousands of dollars to go play travel ball, or can't pay for the private lessons at an indoor facility or things like that. So that's really what drove me personally, was trying to give back that way.
That's great. And so this is a new advisory board for the county, and we wanted to create it because we know this is something there's a lot of people interested in, we wanted to kind of create some space for, for elevating it. So tell us about what you hope the, the board can accomplish over the next few years.
Well, I think part of it is going to determine what the board's main focus is, right? Because each, once you bring in, bring in different groups of people, everybody has their own ideas of what, how we're going to move forward, or what's the board's wanting to accomplish in the first year or second year, however long you're doing it. For me personally, like I said, the big thing is opening up different avenues for those who can't afford the expensive lifestyle of, of youth sports. Whether it's, I know I spoke a lot about baseball, last question, but whether it's basketball, Pop Warner football, something like that, doing whatever we can to open up those avenues to help make sure kids are not getting into a spot where they're being pushed, pushed aside and forgot about as they get older. And I think for me personally, that's something that I would be driving to try to help with is build the community engagement with youth sports. Whether it's, like I said, the different football, basketball, soccer, flag football, baseball, field hockey, whatever it is, find those avenues and help attack that.
That's great. I was going to ask, I've got a question about experience. I think you've already covered that very effectively. You know, one other, one other question we have is, you know, we've got all these different projects, you know, different parks projects, different greenway projects, you know, thinking about, but we have finite dollars, finite time and energy. So how do we set pri, I mean, how would you, I think part of what we look for this board to do is to work with the staff to kind of help advise us on, with finite resources, how do we prioritize it? So what are your, what's your thinking on how to approach that?
Well, I'm not, not exactly sure, to be 100% honest with you. The money is obviously the biggest, biggest factor with everything nowadays, right? Trying to find where to most effectively spread the, the limited finances you may have. I think part of it is the board looking at, what does Asheville and Boncom County need, right? I know there's that, when I was at Bob Lewis, there's a green, talks about a greenway going out in that area, out near the ballpark. It just, for me, it depends on sitting down and figuring out what's best going to be utilized to help the city, help the county as a whole, and improve, improve those items. And, and go down a list, top priority, medium, low priority, however we determine, or you all determine, the board determines that that is set, and then, and based off that. For me, that's, I'm more, I'm all about prioritizing and figuring out what we think is, is top and working, and working the list down from there. Reevaluating as things change, right? Different seasons cause for different things, different, we have, we have a park that closes for whatever reason, we find it's, it's a hazard for kids to play on. Well, that was at bottom of the list, maybe that needs to jump up now, because we've just lost an entire park in East Asheville for people to get out to. But that's, I guess that'd be the best way for me to answer that is prioritize them.
Just so you know, that trail in Canler was approved last year, so.
Okay, all right. I was not unfortunately privy to all those details when I was at.
Two and a half mile.
Okay.
Two and a half mile trails.
Awesome, awesome.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions? You covered, you answered some of the questions.
Yes.
I'm a rambler, so I tend to do that.
Got them right.
That's great. Well, let me just ask one other question. So, you know, a lot of, some of the other folks we talked to already are kind of probably more focused on greenways, less on kind of recreation, you know, organized sports stuff. You seem like you're more focused on the recreation stuff, which is great, because we definitely want this board to kind of cover all that. Any, anything you would like to share, just like thinking about the, you know, the greenway kind of part of this advisory board?
I mean, I'm, I love outdoors, so I'm not going to say greenways are not important, because I love hiking trails, I love being able to go out with my dogs, I have two dogs, and go out and experience that. But you're right, I, I am more recreation, sports-based. That being said, I'm not closed-minded when talking about parks and rec and greenways and this board as a, as a whole. I do, I will say this to help my case, I do think that having somebody who is heavily sports-minded is, will be a very beneficial balancing act for the board. If you have, you know, you don't want to be too lopsided on one side or the other, because in some of these, some group is going to be more time to not left out or forgotten. So that's, I mean, I think I'd be, whereas like I said, I am very recreation-based, I would be that nice balance to somebody who is greenway-based or a group of people who is greenway-based.
Awesome, awesome answer. All right, Sam.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Sounds great, I appreciate it, guys. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Phil.
Can you go back?
Well, I know we got.
Hey, really good. All right.
I think I met you before, maybe at the ABL.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the, 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 I mean, with the, yeah, right, yes, yes. We're with the.
Hi, how are you? Nice to meet you.
Lina Richards, and so Lina, have a seat here.
I'm here, I'm here.
All right. Lina, thanks so much for your interest in serving on our new Parks Recreation and Greenways Advisory Board. So we have just a few minutes to talk to folks this afternoon, because we've got a lot of applicants, there's a lot of.
Sure, yeah.
So we are just asking each applicant to start by just telling us, you know, why you're interested in serving on this board.
Sure, absolutely. So I am a longtime resident of Inca Canler. My husband is a native of Inca Canler, and my son is a student at Inca. He went to San Diego Elementary, now is at Indian Intermediate. I'm also on the Hominy Valley Youth Sports Board of Directors. I'm the media director, and I help parents book registration and all of the activities that involve youth sports in my community. So I was interested in this because of my involvement with Hominy Valley, Red Park, because I am a parent of a student athlete, and because I use the Parks and Rec system in Canler, and we don't currently have a well-defined greenway system. We do have Boncom County Sports Park, of course, which is, you know, a great place. But we definitely need more connectivity within our community. In my professional life, I'm the marketing director for a professional services firm that does engineering and landscape architecture. So I have a vast amount of resources as needed. My company does a lot of greenway design work, park design, engineering, utilities, you name it, marketing branding, we do everything. So it's kind of twofold, why it interested me. It's not only my career, but it is a personal and professional interest.
That's great. And so this is a new board and which we created, because we know there's a lot of public interest in seeing us, you know, making progress in this area. And so when you think about the board, what are you hoping it can accomplish over the next few years?
Specifically as a whole or just in my?
Yeah, as a whole, and then any particular kind of contributions you, you know, you would want to, you know, make in this world. But I'm kind of thinking of like the board as a whole, what?
Sure. I would think just, you know, a better, I mean, and I know, you know, Boncom County has done a great job with greenway master planning and park master planning, but sort of taking that to the next step, how are we going to implement it? Really seeing a, you know, well-defined results of the plans that have been outlined, and how to get the funding to support that, and how to get community buy-in, and really seeing like all of these different communities work together across the county. We are so, you know, spread out, and it's, it's hard necessarily for somebody in far west Canler like myself to really relate to somebody maybe in far east Canler, or I'm sorry, far east Boncom County. And so we begin to meet people from other communities and just work together to see how we can improve our county system as a whole.
As your perspective, both as a parent and then a community leader, working in the sports, what are some ideas you have about ways we could really take our parks to the next level, take those resources to the next level?
I think definitely being more mindful of accessibility for differently-abled individuals, inclusivity, parks that, you know, parks and greenway systems that have sensory gardens or alternative, you know, areas for those with different abilities than able-bodied individuals. Definitely, at least in my particular area, there is a need for indoor recreation, so some sort of community center. Parks aren't necessarily always outside. One of the things we struggle with, with Hominy Valley is finding enough locations for basketball. So we currently utilize the schools, but with so many teams, we're a very popular and we're a very growing youth org, youth sports organization. And even when it's baseball, softball season, you know, we're constantly running into schedule issues because there is a limited amount of space for us to hold our practices.
Do you use Liberty Baptist?
I believe so. I have to ask our basketball commissioner, but we do use Inca Middle, we use Inca Intermediate, Hominy Baptist, Holy Street.
You should check. You're using both, you should check.
All right.
Okay.
Other questions, commissioners? You've answered some of the other questions.
Yeah, I got that. How do you see your, you know, on the professional side, you know, rework, with their access to, to make applications to LEAF and some other organizations? How do you, how do you see being able to utilize that and be able to help?
So I definitely have a full team of funding experts, so to speak. We, our team has actually secured several million over the past few decades in partisan funds, USDA. We have two former USDA liaison staff who are well-versed in planning in that arena. And yeah, Golden Leaf, we can do CDVG, so our team is very well in tune. We have contacts at NCVQ, which isn't really related to parks and recreation or greenways, but we do have the resources available and connections across the state.
So, so that's, that's potentially great, you know, great relationships to have. Are there, does your company do any business with the county, or do you envision it doing any business with the county?
Currently not. We recently opened an Asheville office, so we are downtown. Our home office is in Cary, and our landscape architecture branch, so to speak, is in Raleigh. And so a lot of our business is based in those areas, but we did expand out into Asheville in 2017 to work more with our public clients on the water and wastewater side of things. So eventually we would like to grow that sector and work for the county, and, but right now, we are currently not.
So I would encourage you to just think about that question a lot, because, because it's, I mean, it's, it's like, those are great areas of expertise and great relationships, but it is important that of course, all of us, like, we all have jobs, right? Unless you're retired, like, we have jobs, we do work here, but we do have to be very mindful of potential conflicts and interest serving on the board or on the advisory board. So, and I'm not an attorney, but, you know, you've got a great background, I'd, I'd love to see over this board, but if you do serve, you'll need to kind of carefully check on any conflict and interest issues. And it may be that, my gut feeling is that like, it might be problematic for your firm to do any work, particularly for Parks and Rec, right? It may be for the county more generally, but definitely on, it just, we can't have the boards look like they're steering business to their, to their companies, right? So just take a look at all that and, you know, it can all be navigated, it's just.
So my question was from, you know, Brownie's 100% correct, it's from expertise, if you can take that and utilize that and, and not have that conflict, then it's, it's a management key reason to.
It's probably just Parks and Rec that would be kind of like, that would probably need to be re-walled off, but probably, I'm just thinking out loud, that would probably be the main thing that.
If it come up, you just, you just have to give it.
Yeah.
Right, I would potentially excuse myself from any of these decisions.
Basically what you did.
Yeah. All right. Well, anything else you would like for the board today? I'll work on here.
I think the only thing is, you know, when do you expect to get this up and running? What are the meetings, you know?
I think we're, Josh, do you have a, what are, do you have a tentative meeting schedule for how frequently the board will meet, or the board will kind of think about some of that once it gets constituted?
What is a tent?
Tentative meeting schedule is going to be quarterly. We probably will meet more often than that when we're establishing meeting schedule in the bylaws and so forth, but we plan to roll it to quarterly when we're established.
Great. But I think we'll make the appointments, probably not tonight, but probably every minute, two weeks from today. Yeah, all right. Well, hey, thank you so much.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
All right, how are you? Okay, nice to see you.
Nice to meet you.
You too.
How are you?
I'm just going to make a, sorry, we're kind of finishing with, I took a little.
Sure.
Let's circle back around to that question before we, we wrap up today, just kind of, I think we should just take a few of it. Kelly, how are you?
I'm good, ma. How about you?
Thank you, um, thank you so much for your interest in serving on our new Parks and Greenways Advisory Board.
Oh, yeah. Sounds great.
So we have just a fairly short amount of time to talk this afternoon, because we've got a lot of folks who've applied, who have a lot of interest in this board. But we're asking every person to just start off by telling us why you're, you know, why you're interested in serving on this.
Biggest reason, I've lived here 20 years, I've got two small kids I'm raising now, so I use a lot of the recreation services and parks and things, and, you know, just, my oldest is 11, my youngest is five, so, you know, just anything from being a user of those things that I could put toward it to improvement or anything would be awesome. And that was, that was my big pull, was my kids.
Great. And you, you know, this is a new board that we've constituted to kind of get more community engagement around it and just elevate the profile of these issues. So what would you like to see this board accomplish over the next three or four years?
Well, I guess that would kind of be tough to, I, I don't, I know there's a lot of bureaucracy and, you know, things that go along. I haven't been involved in community, things like this before, so I don't know what an, what an expectation is there, quite honestly, but really just to have my voice heard and get in there and make some change. You know, I hate to be kind of vague, but like I said, you know, I, I don't really know what the parameters are, since this is my first foray, but I kind of just want to have a voice in my, in my county.
Great. And, you know, thinking about the, you know, the broad kind of area of issues that this advisory board will be involved in, any, any other information you'd like to share with us about any experience you have that would be relevant to the advisory board's purpose of work?
I mean, I think just, that just goes back to, I've just not, not grew up here, but I have worked in many incarnations of places down here. I've worked at Trips, Jack the Wood, WLOS, I'm now First Bank. I know a lot about the community, and I just kind of know lots of ins and outs and those sorts of things. So I feel like, you know, just those interactions I've had with people give me a little bit of a reach of, you know, something, someone new may not know, or things like that, or just like what the parks, you know, used to look like. And, you know, I remember Carrier Park way before they were, way before it looked better than it does now. So, you know, I just think I could bring some of that to, to the board.
Sure. Great. Commissioners, if you have any additional questions you would want to ask?
So think of the last few years in Boncom County, actually, there's been a lot of discussion about greenways, and it's a very popular topic. And at the same time, we have other recreational assets, parks, and I'd just like to hear your, your opinion on balancing those, you know, in the county.
Right.
What your thoughts are.
I think some of that, you know, the improving on kind of what we already have, I know, I read a little bit about that around New Belgium and that kind of greenway, how that's kind of been put on hold and those sorts of things now. And I don't know if we need to go necessarily all greenway type place, that would be a nice way to connect everything, if that could be, but I think a lot might have to look about just updating facilities that we've been doing in some places, I think, but it could.
but it could still do better than, than we have. There's just other parts, like there's a, a park out in Morganton where they've got trails and like a ropes kind of thing, just kind of more interactive play for the kids, I think. Maybe something a little bit different than your traditional type of playgrounds, just as one thing I like, you know, things where I like where you're doing, you know, you can walk kind of through things and then there's like little exercise stuff or, you know, there's things along the way, not just one big thing here, just adding little bits along the way, I think is, is good, you know, even if it's just an information stop or like, hey, this animal lives around here, you know, that sort of thing, I think is nice.
Great.
Yep.
Great. Um, well, Kelly, um, is there anything else you think we ought to know? Like we've had, this is, this is the board where we had, I don't know, maybe, I don't know, there's not been many of the boards where we've had as many people apply for this process, but we've got a lot of folks we're talking to about it. It's obviously a lot of interest in the community.
Yeah.
Any, anything else that you want to share with us while we're here this afternoon?
I mean, I don't know what's set me apart from anybody else, but, you know, I love that it's got such a good reaction to it and that there are a lot of people to really choose from. It makes me feel like that there is a need there, definitely for it, if there's an interest that big and even if it's not me, you know, if there's something else still going on to be involved in, you know, that would be great going forward.
Well, we are, we are as well, although it makes our job harder because there's lots of.
Right, yeah. Yeah, definitely. Why can't only just like four people do this?
Yeah. But thank you so much for your interest in this. I think we're gonna probably make the decisions on these initial appointments probably at our meeting two weeks from today. And as we said, we'll be teasing this with a lot of great folks, but if, regardless of where we get on this first group, you know, there will be additional openings on this board and others, so we really appreciate your, your interest in working on the board.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Stay warm.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Derek, hey. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Hey, good to see you again, yes, sir. Hello, very good. See you. Hello, hello, good to see you again. Hello, I'll make it around there.
All right, Derek, hey, thank you so much for your interest in our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Absolutely.
The Greenways Advisory Board. So we're asking each of our applicants, of which we have many, right? There's a lot of interest in this.
Sure.
It is good. To just start off by just telling us, you know, a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the advisory board.
Sure. Uh, well, I graduated from Wilson in 2001, so that was my first introduction to the Asheville area. After graduating from there, went on to work for Outward Bound for a while. Um, so basically my love of the outdoors and the outdoor pursuits, uh, my dad always said it was a hobby until you got paid to do it. So I finally got paid to do it. So, uh, working for Outward Bound, got my masters at Ohio University, stuck around there, my masters in recreation and sports sciences, stuck around there for a few years, working in the outdoor program. Um, just really have come to understand that recreation is how we recreate ourselves and how we relax and it's spun into so many other things now, multimodal transportation and all that good stuff. I started out just really wanting to be in the outdoors and now that I have a business and own a house in Asheville, I'm here and the community gives me a lot, so I want to start giving back to the community as well. Um, I am on the board or sitting on the Asheville Parks and Greenways board, that's kind of defunct, I'm sure a lot of y'all know about that. Um, we're still holding a bunch of money for you guys.
Wait, so you're, you're on, you're on the, just say a little more about that.
Sure. So the Asheville Parks and Greenways Foundation, which you all probably know about, is a city fiduciary arm that used to be really important because the city didn't have a way to raise money through a nonprofit. But now that's changed a little bit from what I understand, so the, what used to be important as a fundraising arm is now obsolete. Um, that, it's like two people that are holding the keys to that machine, so to speak. Um, Lucy knows all about it. Um, Stephanie, Moss and Doll, of course, and all those other folks.
So is a, is a, an entity set up to accept private donations for these kinds of parks?
The city, it was, yes. And it's still, still intact, it's just not very active. Um, but anyway, uh, yeah, so I'm, I'm really invested in our community. I am a business owner. Um, I, my business is French Broad Outdoors. We rent bikes on the greenway, uh, we float the blue way, um, we're huge sponsors of Greenworks and True and Riverlink. I'm wearing a Greenworks t-shirt on right now. Derek Rattler and I are good friends. Um, it's just really, I just really think it's important. Uh, I made the suggestion to Chris Bumanek that we should have the address of all the takeouts posted at the river, so if you're floating down the river and there was an incident, you would know the address to call 911. Since I made that suggestion, it has been implemented, which is really nice. So I'm just, I'm just really mindful of the community and what makes things safe and well, it's not really good or successful. Um, there's no lighting on the greenway, like emergency call boxes. I'd love to really see that happen on the one that Parkland County's building, in the Woodfin, our university, our UCA has call boxes on greenways. We've done a lot cheaper than putting them on the lights when in, just little things like that. Um, I just really believe in the greenway and I want to, as the community's given to me, I want to be able to get that. That's pretty much.
Okay, great. Um, so thinking about this new board, and, you know, some of these questions are sort of related, so, um, you know, what would you like to see it really accomplish over the next few years?
Yeah, uh, I think what's really important is a good communication avenue between the people and people that have been the people that make it happen. Um, I think there's been a lot of, or I've seen a lot of good communication, um, with the 26th corridor stuff and the greenway stuff and, um, stuff going on in Woodfin and it's just, it's just really important to, for me at least, to keep my fingers in it and know what's going on and how we can help move it forward and, you know, place where everybody wants to be. Kind of be like a wrinkle off there, but.
You flagged two actually really interesting specific safety issues on the river end on the greenways. Is that a particular interest of yours or just?
Well, um, again, because my whole focus is outside, um, yes, it is. For one, my, my customers and my participants, whether they're on the greenway and, you know, they're out on my bike for a couple hours and they want to have a beautiful scenery and, you know, come back, talk about homelessness and there's just a lot of community issues that our visitors, whether locals or out-of-towners, experience a lot of. Um, and I, I see that because my business is on the river. My business takes advantage of these greenways and blueways. So that's why as a business and as a person, we work hard to support our community nonprofits because that's where I make my living. I have 25 employees, you know, like the greenways, you know, needle collection or needle prevention, these are big issues for, for anyone using the greenway.
Thanks.
Can I throw one in?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, you have a business on group. Um, you started out, I mean, your qualifications for outdoor recreation is, is that one. Uh, there's a lot of conversations, um, in Asheville and around Bunkin County in the last several years about greenways. It's kind of a, I mean, if they come to French Broad Outdoors, if they sit and talk for a while, they don't, it's coming up, right?
Oh, yeah, I speak about it all the time.
It's a world, it's that circle. There's another circle in, in this, which is our, which is our parks, you know, our facilities, you know, and those that kind of have access through your circle.
Sure.
So, um, your circle's pretty defined. I mean, it's French Broad Outdoors, it's a community business, and so you have to be able to take that information, pull it in, and apply it along with the system.
Sure.
So what you're caught on outside of that world, as far as it comes to recreation in Bunkin County, that it is inclusive.
Sure. Well, first of all, I'm also on the board of the Western Work County Disc Golf Association, and we are huge users of Lake Julian, same till.
Hate to get in people's way, but.
But yeah, we are huge users and that's another opportunity that I bring to the table is another user group, which is the park users. Um, Lake Julian is very well-funded, um, the disc golf course is getting, uh, nicer and nicer, um, facilities, the bathhouse is integrated or the restaurants are integrated. I imagine they've probably been there since the camp. Um, an example juxtaposed Julian to a city park, Richmond Hill, um, the infrastructure there for the disc golfers is almost non-existent. They have some baskets, um, there's no two bags, I mean, there's two bags, but they're nowhere near as nice of a quality that we have in the county park system.
Yeah, but.
It's a beautiful course. I mean, there's, we have eight-year tournaments bringing people, you know, pros that are making a hundred thousand dollar plus salaries into our community to play disc golf, which is fantastic. Um, but yeah, the soccer, I played soccer as a kid, um, like all of the parks, it's very important to provide a free, if not very discounted, programming. I mean, just even having the playground, I see people up at the new park at Hominy, at that workout station, all the time. It gets used tremendously. I'm not talking 20, 30 people, but, you know, I guarantee you, there's 10, 15 people a day that either ride that bike or push that row machine. It's, it's good. And those are the things that are accessible for folks that are, you know, if you want to go work out, but you can't afford to gym, that's awesome. Now, there's not much marketing or push that's been out there around that and how to excite people on it and, you know, but.
Well, I wouldn't say there's been as much excitement on that as there has in the blue way.
Sure.
For the Woodfin, greenway.
Absolutely.
And because there's a lot of discussion about that, yet we have a, a greenway that and a trail system we just approved and, and think again.
That's fantastic.
So a lot of it is, is the circles and the conversation and it's just important that we're able to have a balance of it outside of that circle and reach the people that can't afford to come and do as far as.
Sure. It's important.
Um, Derek, thank you so much for, you know, um, your interest in this. You've brought obviously a lot of, a lot of direct engagement to the.
Sure.
Discuss assets to the table. Anything else you think we ought to know? Uh, we have just a few minutes to talk to each person.
Sure, no, I totally understand. No, um, I, I fear, there's a, I'm not as much of a mystery as I imagine as some of the other candidates are, um, so I don't even know the other candidates, but.
They're pretty mysterious.
So yeah, I just welcome the opportunity to, to sit here before y'all and answer some questions and, you know, if they don't make it this year, it's two more years to try to.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, um, one thing I would just mention while we're on here, so, um, you know, if you do get appointed, I think for, you know, you and, uh, you know, we need to, because you do have a business involved in some of this.
I know, there's.
You know, we're gonna, we'll need you to kind of just talk to the staff and if you need any kind of, um, kind of guidance on any kind of the conflict of interest, like how to handle them if they do come up, you know, and there's ways to recuse yourself and things like that, but.
Absolutely.
You know, we want people who are involved, but sometimes when people are involved, there are those issues. So we just want to be very mindful of that and handle it all in the, the right way.
I'm definitely on my application, and I'm fully aware of that.
Yeah, absolutely. All right.
Thank you.
Take care. Thanks, everybody. Stay warm.
Take care.
Good to see you.
Keep going, Ed.
I had a blast, you know? I was like.
How are you?
And then I just sat.
Yeah, we're all back here. Be nice to each other. I'm ready, I'm ready, thank you so much for being with us.
Hi.
How are you? Thank you so much for coming to see us.
Y'all got two chairs. They're both y'all.
Hi, welcome. Thank you.
Teresa, thanks so much for coming to talk to us this afternoon and for your interest in serving on the new Parks and Greenways Advisory Board. So we have, um, just a few minutes to talk to each of the applicants this afternoon, so we're not going to take up too much of your time. We wanted to meet the folks who are interested in serving, right?
Okay.
So thanks for your interest. So we want to start off by just ask, we're asking each person to just say a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the Parks and Recreation and Greenways Advisory.
Um, I'm a coach for Special Olympics and a mom, and I think there's a lot of work for our kids that needs to be done here. So, yeah.
Well, that's great. That's great. And that's a big part of why we wanted to put this, uh, community advisory board together, to kind of give a place for people to get involved and to educate the community about what we're doing and what we could do in the future. So that's the exact agreement we wanted to do it. So, so you're, you're real involved in Special Olympics. You want to just tell us a little bit more about, about that and as well as any other, anything else you'd want us to know about, kind of your interest in Parks and Recreation?
Um, I've been coaching for Special Olympics for about 10 years. I started in cheerleading and I'm now the head coach of the swim team. Um, I'm a daughter's on the team, Georgia's on the team.
Booty?
Yeah. Um, I like to volunteer around here. I have, uh, a ministry where I put up scarves and coats in the wintertime, um, at your park. And what else do we do? Tryna, tryna.
Great, great. And, um, so, so one of the other questions that we're asking everybody who's applying and to, this is a new advisory board that we carry. And we have advisory boards that work on different issues, but we haven't had one on Parks and, Parks and Greenways and Recreation. So we're interested in what folks would like to see this board, you know, what are some of the things we might be able to accomplish with the board over the next couple of years?
Um, from my perspective, I'd get more of a, um, inclusive play areas or meeting areas out in the, on the public parks. Um, definitely our differently-abled individuals have, have access to the swings and everything, which there's really not enough of that right now.
That's great. Commissioners, any other questions you would like to ask?
I've got more. If you, um, if you go out, go out to the park and, you know, y'all go somewhere, where do you go? Where y'all go? Where y'all go and try and play and, and in Bunkin County and, you know, yes?
Um, we go out to Lake Julian a little bit. Um, Weaver, Weaverville has a nice park.
They do, Lake Williams? Mm-hmm. Sure do. So if you were going to make changes in either one of those parks from an inclusive, you know, with differently-abled, you know, kids and adults, what, what do you think you'd do? Just very quickly, just maybe two things.
Like you said earlier, uh, the, the swings and equipment, basically.
Well, that's great. We've really covered the questions we wanted to ask. Are there, are there any, is there anything else that you would like to let the board know about while we're all here together this afternoon?
I.
In terms of the, you know, the interest in the, in the board?
Hmm, I don't think so.
It's okay.
I have one more question.
Please.
Yeah, I'd love to just hear more about your coaching career and your athletic career. Are there things that, ideas you have about how Special Olympics could be, um, better supported or the resources or access at the parks or facilities could be stronger, anything like that?
Wow, um.
Great question.
Yeah. Josh and Carla have been amazing. This year we've got our own invitational, we're a swim invitational at the new pool.
Yeah.
Well, that's going to be.
That's gonna be. We've done having it over in Haywood County, which is great, but, you know, our kids want it, want it here.
Yeah.
And they know more that their community is supporting them, having a bath here. Hopefully it'll grow much bigger. Um, this year also we're going to the, another big invitational for the East Coast Irish swimmers, so they have really, really grown the program.
Yeah.
What's your daughter's name?
Leanne Williams. And this is Georgia.
Georgia?
Yeah.
Do you swim, Georgia?
You're swimming?
Yeah.
You swim?
What's your favorite stroke?
Freestyle?
Freestyle.
Yeah.
That's a fast one.
Good.
So you're fast, right?
Yeah.
Well, we don't have a whole lot of time, but before you go, I want to make sure that I will give this to you. Can we give this to her, to the, to the commissioners? We wear those, okay? And we can only wear those after people say they want us to be a commissioner. So we want you to be our commissioner out there when you're swimming, okay? So you can start wearing that.
Good.
All right, well, thank you both for coming to the conference today. We're really excited about the new committee and we're so glad that you're interested in serving on it. We will probably make a decision on the appointments, have a meeting not tonight, but two weeks from tonight, okay? So we'll let you know.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Nice to meet you both. Thanks for coming.
Bye. Thanks.
All right. Bye, Georgia.
Bye. Bye. Dusty Allison.
Dusty Allison. Hey, how are you? Nice to see you. Nice to see you guys.
You too.
Hi, Desmond, good to see you.
Nice to meet you.
How are you?
All right, Desmond, hey, good to see you. So we don't have a lot of time to talk, you know, a lot of people talk today.
Yeah, sure.
But, you know, this is a new advisory board for the county Parks Recreation and Greenways. So we're sort of asking each person who's applied, just tell us a little about yourself and why you're interested in serving on this board.
Yeah, absolutely. So Dusty Allison, I'm a native of Western North Carolina. Moved to Asheville in nineteen ninety-three, attended college at UNC Asheville. I currently work in real estate, but have a long background, and this is part of why my interest obviously lies with this committee, but a lot of my background is in outdoor recreation and recreation industry. So for, from a variety of different angles, from the education side, from the nonprofit side, to the actual gear company, brand industry side, to media, which I, my last role was one of the publishers of Beaverjoules magazine for about ten years. So, you know, all of that, obviously I'm steeped in the outdoors from, from a lot of different, and see it from a lot of different perspectives. So obviously, and that, and the fact that I've moved to Asheville for a long time, been invested here for many, many years, makes me, you know, feel like I can bring something to the table.
And so with this new board, that's kind of related to the first question, but what would you like to see the board accomplish over the next few years?
So, from my perspective, I think being transparent and, and connecting the role of what Recreation Services does for the county and helping interpret that to the general public. I think lots of times with most residents, there's always confusion between city and county, parks, greenways, trails, who's, who's got control of taking care of what. And so I think hopefully, you know, educating the general public about, you know, what recreational services are there, how they can contribute their voice and get involved in a number of ways. I think that, you know, there's always a question and sometimes a lot of frustration that I hear from residents about more trails, more greenways, why don't we have them, what's holding us up? And I think helping put more, shine more light on that and again, bringing that transparency to the table. I think that's, in my perspective, what this board as an advisory committee could help do in a lot of ways. And, you know, we're obviously a very diverse area, so, you know, the hope I would think with the board is that you will bring a lot of different voices to the table, a lot of different perspectives, a lot of different experiences, life experiences in terms of helping, you know, that part of the county government really grow and foster. I mean Asheville is what Asheville is, right? I mean, that's why the quality of life here is tremendous. A lot of people move here because of the outdoors, because of recreation, that's a big factor in what makes us a special place. So I think it's only, you know, anything that we can do to help grow that and shine a light on it, I think it's very important.
Great. Mr. Jolene, other questions you'd like to ask?
Yeah, I appreciate hearing what your background and perspectives and, I think there's a lot of passion on this board about ways we can increase access and inclusion around parks and recreational resources. I just wondered if that's something you have some thoughts, ideas around?
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, do you mean physical access or just in terms of demographics?
Anywhere, all, all of you, all of you, yeah.
I think education and entry points are important. I think any kind of programming you can bring to the table that, that is, you know, with outdoors and recreation in general, a lot of people are timid about it, a lot of people don't like to admit they're new to something. So I think lowering those barriers in any way you can find, you know, whether that's from a, an experience level, whether that's a demographic level, I think more education and programming all the time is important, but then the marketing of that is important too. Just making people know and make people aware that this is available. Oftentimes, obviously, there's a cost factor, so any ways that you can lower the barrier of participation by making it free or making it affordable, I think those all help. And I think, you know, making people understand that it's, there are a lot of benefits to it, right? I mean, there's the wellness component, there's the, the private place component, and, and bringing all that to the table, I think, together helps. I think that a lot of people sometimes see outdoors recreation as a certain, and, and having worked in the outdoor industry for a long time, this has always been the question, how do we increase diversity in the outdoors? How do we bring more people and players to the table? And I think there's always a question of, again, it comes back sometimes to, some people perceive it as this is just for a leisure-based, you know, class thing, and then it doesn't have to be that way. I mean, it can be as simple as pools, parks, and neighborhoods, it can be as simple as, as teaching people how to fish, it can be something as simple as teaching people how to, taking them out on, you know, hiking trails that a lot of us take for granted every day. So this is initial thoughts, but.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, it's always, always a challenge, but I feel like there's some really simple things that people can do to, to help ease that.
Any other questions that, you know, the commissioners have?
I, you know, maybe it's a question that just popped in my head some last night. Because I've heard disc golf wise.
Yeah.
And so, which I think is, is a very, I think a lot of people play it, a lot of people than, than what I thought.
Right.
And how do you balance, you know, having access for people to do that, which is pretty popular in its circle.
Yeah, right.
With just the kid wants to go for it. Two different levels on totally different perspectives. And as a, and if there's an average taxpayer out there or what, you know, they're gonna, they want to just try to find a place maybe where y'all can opt in and out, you know, they're tired of getting hollered at by the neighbor because of, when the frisbee goes in that yard, you just want a place to go.
Right.
You know, we have to provide that too, but it's not big and bold, but nice.
Right.
So how do you, how much you balance all that, you know, because it's all important on that.
Oh, absolutely. I understand. It's a good question and, and one that, I mean, I, it hits home to me. I live in the heart of West Asheville. We bought our house there ten years ago and I have a ten-year-old son. So part of that is, we live on a postage stamp-sized yard, but for, for us, it was about having access to parks and green spaces and, you know, and extension of our front yard, right? I mean, so I think that we made that decision by choice. I enjoy disc golf too, I don't play regularly, but I think that there's room at the table for all that, right? I mean, I think that, that, you know, people need to see and understand that there's, is as much energy and love and dedication to having basic green spaces for kids and families to go out and kick the ball together and throw a frisbee as there is with the infrastructure and capital may be needed to develop a disc golf course. And I, I think that's, again, and that's the beauty of Asheville, is I think that even though it really kind of hails an outdoorsy town, I think that there's, there are a lot of families, people that don't connect with that or they don't think they connect with that because they only see disc golf or they think of hiking or backpacking, that kind of thing. And I think that's part of that education and communication piece too. It's the marketing of it, it's not just that it's, it's only about disc golf, but, you know, it's about the fact that hopefully, you know, with county land and parks and pools and that kind of thing, that that's taxpayers, you know, that this should be an extension of your lifestyle, an extension of your yard, that's the way I see it, you know, and living in, in a high-density neighborhood. We don't have a great yard, but I raised my kid going to the park and the pool and throwing frisbee, you know, in these public spaces. So that's, that's as important and then as they grow up and evolve and as families learn some of these things, then hopefully, that's the hook that catches them to then, you know, like, oh, my kid likes to throw a frisbee, I keep hearing about frisbee golf or disc golf, and that'll be the next step.
So you've been to, I read you, y'all go to Julian, is that your go-to park? Is that already dead in yours?
Yeah, well, yeah, I spend time at Lake Julian.
What would you change up there if you had the opportunity to provide it, just very quickly?
Well, I mean, barring aesthetics, I mean, I think that like.
More floating out, you know?
I think, you know, I mean, more trails is not, are always nice. I think, um, hmm. I think just maybe more signage, maybe something to connect the visitors more to, to what's there and the resources that are there. I think a lot of people that I even talk to forget sometimes that Lake Julian even has a park. They know it as like the old CPN plant or Duke or whatever, but like they forget that there's actually a park resource there. And again, I think a lot of people, you know, maybe because of the backdrop of, of plant operation and that kind of thing, that that's not their immediate go-to, but I think for a lot of people in that neighborhood, why not? You know, if you have trails to walk, if you have, you know, possibly picnic, you know, more picnic tables, just more, you know, I've always appreciated any time, like I know Diamond Brand used to have like these sort of get-out days where they would take families and like have boat demos and kayak demos. I think, again, that's an educational piece of it that, you know, maybe somebody's never been in a canoe before, maybe somebody's never been in a kayak before, and it doesn't have to be a business or retail operation doing that, it can, it can be the department that does something like that. But I think, you know, again, it's a, it's a lake and it's a water resource right here in the county and why not try to get more people on it? Which is again, not that they're going to necessarily always recreate on that lake for forever, but if it's a good entry point and a stepping stone for somebody, then why not?
Hey, Dusty, fun. We're out of time. Thank you so much for being interested in seeing this and getting involved in this. And we're probably gonna, we're probably gonna make the decisions on this, not tonight, but two weeks from tonight.
Okay.
So stay tuned and we're excited about it and glad you're here.
Yeah, well, thanks so much for everyone's time.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Good to see you.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.
Good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you.
Hi, everybody. Okay, hey, good to see you again. Hi, does he speak to you?
Hi, Desmond.
Hi, Desmond, nice to see you.
Hi, James. Hi, very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
All right. Shay, thank you so much for coming to talk to us.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we don't have a lot of time, too, a lot of people.
I know, yeah.
So we're, we're willing to connect with everybody who's interested in this. So we're starting off just by asking folks to just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in serving in the advisory board.
Perfect. Yeah, so I have been here in Asheville for twenty years and I am Shay Robinson's, I am Shay Robinson's management. I do events in town. And Chris Bubinak and I are good friends and I know he was on this board at once and so I was talking to him about it. And in reading some of the description of things, I think that my love for the outdoors and planning events and looking at what you're wanting to grow and how you're wanting to grow the, the events that you're looking for, this committee or this, this position, I think I could lend some, some expertise and some help to that. So, and I'm, you know, very involved in downtown and in our community and I think that's really important too. So that's a little bit about me.
Sure. So, so thinking about this new Parks Recreation, Newway Advisory Board, what would you like to try, what would you like to see accomplished in the next several years?
Wow. I would love to see it grow into some, into more of the rural areas, for sure. I don't, I don't think a lot of people really know what this committee does or what it's for, and so I'd love to see it, to get out into the community a little bit more. And I think to do that, I think, you know, putting together some events and some one-on-one rea, uh, interactions with people in the community would get people more involved with it. So that's what I'd like to see from it and see from.
All right. And I think you've touched on this a little bit already with some of your, some of your experience, but any, any other things related to your background or experience that you think would be good for the board to know in terms of what you bring to serving on the advisory board?
Um, not that.
And you've already covered all that.
I think I've covered it, yeah. I, I do. I mean, I'm involved with the Downtown Association and a couple of other, you know, downtown committee boards and so, you know, I think bringing all of them together, I could get help there with that. What they were all really passionate about is increasing access and inclusion around parks and recreational resources, whether it's a greenway or a public park. From an event planning perspective, can you maybe sketch for us how, how events might be used to help drawing new and different folks to? So I think making the parks, like, I used to live across from Giant's Park. I, I lived there for like eight years and I just don't think there's enough stuff involved in our parks, like, you know, like family-friendly events, right? That bring the community out to the park, to access the parks. You know, I think providing some of those and getting people out into the community would really help grow that and get the support that you need. And I'm sure you guys need funds for things and, you know, looking at how do you raise those funds? Who do you get involved in those? How do we clean up the parks? How do we manage those parks? That was a big thing for me, living across the park, from the park, there were people and kids in it, is it safe for people? You know, safety is a big issue for people. And I know, living across from that park, there were numerous times that I was on the phone with APD late at night. And so I think just maybe getting that across to people, big park-specific, and I think the greenways as well, you know? Thank you.
So the last several years, there's been a lot of conversations about greenways in Asheville, Duncan County. And a lot of conversations about existing parks and other recreational assets that we have. So how would you balance that? What's your, you mentioned a park across the street, you've been out in the county to other parks, what's your, what's your thoughts on that, on trying to improve that?
So I know greenways are a really big topic and, and they should be because then we'd want to grow them and preserve them. You know, I have been to some of the parks in the Weaverville area and then out toward like South Asheville. The biggest park, which is the one off of Amboy Road, Pritchard, not Pritchard Park, Carrier Park, thank you. You know, I, I think just getting people to the parks to feel comfortable with the parks. And I also, as an event planner, I get a lot of calls for people who want to have events in parks, and they don't know how to do that. They don't know if it's acceptable or, you know, it's not very clear to people. And I think that, you know, touching on, you know, that you can do an event in a park, it, you know, it is a welcoming environment for that type of thing would be helpful too. Did that answer your question a little bit?
Sure.
Maybe? I might have talked around for a little bit.
That's actually great, you know, about, about the events and parks.
Yeah.
You can figure it out, but it's, it's great real estate, right? We have it all over. We don't really, it's not something we really, we really talk about much, but it's a great asset, great property.
The county does want to be an, well, we do more, but the abuse awareness month is in the Carrier Park. And that's really, it's a really good, I mean, it gets everybody involved in this very quick.
Yeah. Yeah. When, I, I used to live in Atlanta prior to moving to Asheville and I was a lobbyist for the Department of Transportation. So having worked with them and, you know, turning the railways into biking paths and parks and all of that, I'm very familiar with, you know, how to go about doing all of, all of those and getting the funds for those. So, you know, when this position came up, I was kind of like, kind of going back to my roots a little bit, so, yeah.
All right. Well, I think we've got through all the questions that we've been asking.
Okay.
Is there anything else you feel like we ought to know over all here together?
Yeah, I, I don't think so. I mean, I'm, if you guys have any questions, please feel free to email me and I look forward to hearing from you. free to email me, and I look forward to hearing from you.
Great, we'll probably make the decision on, or commissioning tonight, but in two weeks from now.
Okay.
All right? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, absolutely. Nice to meet everybody.
Thank you so much.
This is Ally.
Ally, hey, how are you? Brownie Newman, nice to see you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Joe Belter, nice to meet you.
Hi, Amanda Edwards.
Hi, Amanda.
I hope there won't be a quiz.
Hi, I'm Jasmine.
Hi, Jasmine, nice to meet you.
Hi, Ally.
Hi, Al.
Hello.
Feel free, come up.
My jacket on there.
It's still chilly outside.
All right, Ally, thank you so much for coming to talk to us this afternoon, and thanks for your interest in serving on this Parks Recreation and Greenways Advisory Board. So we have just a few minutes, since we have a lot of folks applying. So we're starting off by just asking each person, you know, why are you interested in serving on the advisory board?
That's a great question. I have been interested in being involved in the community a little bit, really since the elections in 2016, and just kind of getting my act together and getting involved now, so kind of saw that, actually, I looked online a few times before, I just didn't see really anything that piqued my interest yet, and so this kind of came up, and so I just applied for it, and that's why I'm here.
All right, great. So, you know, this is a new advisory board for the county, we have not had this board present previously, so, but we know there's a lot of interest in all of this, so when you think about it, what would you like to see the advisory board accomplish in the next few years?
Well, I, I see a lot of changes going on in Asheville and a lot of growth going on, and we're such an outdoor-active community that to have greenways that actually do connect to each other and give people a nice, long, winding way to see the city is such a unique opportunity for us and take advantage of our riverfront that we haven't taken advantage of before, and, you know, watch for some conservation in those things as well, so protect our lands and keep things beautiful.
And is there anything else you would like, I mean, you've kind of touched on some of this when we have your, you know, your application, but anything else you'd like to say just about your experience that is, might be relevant to the work on the Parks Recreation?
I do work in real estate, I work for Beverly Hanks, and I work with Billy Taylor, who's also a developer in the area, so I get a lot of experience with people coming to visit, and, you know, they ask a lot about the greenway trails and what there is to do around here, so I think having firsthand knowledge or actually input to what is going on in the county would be super, super exciting, and so I think that has a nice tie-in to the, the committee as well, the advisory.
Terrific, terrific. Commissioners, any other questions y'all would like to ask?
So I've got a question, and a lot of conversations will last several years about, about greenways, and certainly that's, that's important. Of course, we have a lot of other recreational assets in the county, so how do you think you would keep that narrative alive, and what's your thoughts on that?
Well, I've been to a lot of the sports complexes, I have family who's come into town and had like soccer games and things like that at some of our parks and recreational areas, and I've heard about the flooding, you know, continuous ongoing flooding in the area over in East Asheville, and would like to, you know, kind of just keep my pulse on the fingers of those things, and I'm curious as to some suggestions on how to handle it to not have to replace the fields, you know, every year, every time it floods and things like that, so the, the parks are very interesting as well, and I go, I'll go to Alexander River Park quite often with my family and dog and walk there a lot, so, you know, I take, and, and, oh, the one by Amboy, you know, Carrier Park, yes, and walk, you know, a lot of those trails, so to keep those, you know, fresh and at the minds, top of minds of people that they can go and do those things with the dog park there, and just, you know, the nice variety that we have here is unique to our areas, and I want to, you know, keep, keep those interests alive to keep those parks and recreational things going.
All right, terrific, and so, one other question is, you know, we have a, we have a county greenways plan, do you have a chance to take a look at it or familiarize yourself with that?
I did take a peek at it today, but I haven't delved into it very deep, so to be honest, I have not learned a whole lot about it yet. I'm figuring when you get on the advisory board, you'll probably get some firsthand knowledge. I have had the, the pleasure of the town manager of Woodfin, and I obviously can't remember his name, but speak on, on their plans and by the river and having that going on, so that was fascinating, and I just loved all their ideas and, you know, how they're going to really kind of get that launched and off the ground.
Good. The county was really involved in that project as well, and with it. All right, well, Ally, we've covered all the questions that we have been asking everyone, are there any other questions that anybody wants to ask while we're all here together? Is there anything else you would like to share with us while we're here this afternoon?
You know, I, I don't have a lot of the experience that was listed on the, the requirements or a lot of those tie-ins, but I do think real estate and, you know, the county go hand in tap, hand, because they, you know, elevate the community in both ways, you know, with development, and so I just want to kind of get involved and really kind of help out the community, and I love it, I love it here, and I want to see it do well.
Well, thank you for your interest, we're really excited about the committee, and we're glad that you're interested in serving on it. It's gonna be a tough decision, because we have huge number of people.
So many, I figured there would be a lot.
But, but anyway, that's, that's great, it's just time and how much interest there is.
Absolutely, and how much great people we have around here to get involved.
Yeah.
Very nice to meet all of you.
All right, and-
Nine?
We're getting three for each district.
Stuart, Philip Coe didn't come, right?
Oh, he was in our show.
And Stuart Coles did not come. I'm sorry he didn't, Stuart is a, they'll, they'll know him, he runs Climax downtown, he's been a small business owner in the county for forever.
He had a good application.
I mean, I would, I would be happy to support him, but I know him real well, I'm sure that maybe others don't, may not, so that he's a, anyway, he's a very qualified person.
Why didn't he come to you?
Why didn't he come?
A whole, he's scheduled to come at 2:30.
So might call him. Might call him.
Let's call him.
I know Stuart, too. We don't need to call that, Lenar or, something must have come up.
Well, part of the concern is not just Stuart's, Stuart's a good potential, I personally, we have enough people from number two because of part of the concerns we do.
Yeah, we don't. Well, your challenge is going to be having nine. Yeah, that's gonna be.
You mean having it add up tonight?
You have nine, you gotta have nine.
Yeah.
And we have an interview, but we interviewed eleven.
Eleven. We interviewed eleven, it was 13 scheduled, but we only actually interviewed eleven.
All right, let's, let's go.
I mean, I could be out, I mean, I couldn't do it. Yeah.
We only interviewed one.
What, today?
Yeah, and that was the, that was the perks, yeah.
No, well, yeah, Stuart Coles.
All right, from, so let's just kind of do it by district, one, we had Susan Dean.
Sam Mason.
Sam Mason.
Derek Turner, Turner. Dusty Allison. Shay Brown.
All right, and two.
Yeah.
We had Ian Dotson.
And, yeah, yeah, she said that. She was real stable.
And three, we had Jennifer Vennick.
Lena Richards. Jennifer's the sister of a current employee within the department, just to bring that up. She's a what? She's Chris Bubinak's sister, Chris runs the marketing for us, and that's fun.
Jennifer is, her brother works for the county?
Mm-hmm, he works for the Parks and Rec Department. He works for Parks and Rec? He does. Well, you gotta, you gotta make sure that's, that that's a conflict, because we got-
Susan's, I don't think it applies to him.
I don't think it is.
Teresa Williams.
I think it's the criteria.
Yeah, you gotta be.
And Ally Howard. Have I forgotten anybody? Let's see, who we interviewed today?
I think I got one.
I think you're one shy.
Oh, Shay Brown.
Shay.
Shay Brown.
She was one.
I got Shay, I got Shay.
You got her.
Teresa Williams.
Two, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Dusty Allison, we have a lot of ones. So the problem is we've probably got more than we can use here, a lot of really good people who've not been here, and then-
But you don't have-
One would be good, one would be good.
Lena Richards.
Lena Richards, yeah.
Is in-
Oh, yeah, thanks, another three.
One would be good is to pin those on a map, and we got the addresses, that would be good.
So, so, you know, we have so many people and we have the balancing of districts, do y'all want to just, I mean, this could be just kind of a straw poll, just kind of see where we're at, some things might emerge, just like people who are clearly wanting to be on there. How do y'all want, any suggestions, or I could, I could just ask people to-
Just go around, what folks say.
Well, okay, well, we only can appoint three from each one, right? So, so if we do this, we could all go around, you can get up to three votes for each of the, the districts, right?
Then you're only-
And maybe that'll make it clear who's got the strongest support.
And they said, well, we'll narrow it down to one and two, probably.
But you're only gonna do seven if you do that.
Yeah, we must just need to take some more time to interview some more people, I mean, we don't, I think we should, I think we should try to-
Put it out district two.
Do what we can, right?
We need to put it out district two.
Yep.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I left a message for Stuart to call me back, I gotta hold the Philip Coe, and he was a day off, so I told him we may want to call him for a phone interview, do y'all want to do that right now?
They're both in two, which would be great, right?
Yeah, I'll wait.
Are they, they're, so, what did Stuart say again? You didn't get a voicemail?
I just got his voicemail, so I left him a message.
Why don't we interview Philip on the phone right now, because if-
Does that one work?
Yes, here it is, let's do it.
We need it, and we need to.
Okay, Jasmine, I'm going to use this.
Okay.
Lamar, I might need your expertise here.
So, are we gonna go ahead and vote on this today?
I kind of feel like it's fresh in our minds, I mean, why, in two weeks from now, I'm gonna forget who else people are.
But if we're gonna do three from each district, we're gonna have to put Philip and Stuart in to get three.
We could do some more interviews coming up this year, for district two, yeah, that'd be my suggestions, like, what's the-
Yeah, I agree with that.
We're in groups for two. We're in groups for two. We're in groups for two. Yeah, because we got all of them for one.
Which isn't surprising.
Yeah, I think we can do it, the reason I like coming in, okay, because it is, people want to come, they're coming, okay, the other is-
Hello, Philip?
Yeah.
Hey, this is Lamar from Bunkin County Commissioner's Office.
Uh, yeah, hello, Lamar.
Hey, how you doing? We wanted to see if you-
I'm doing well.
I'm sorry, we wanted to see if you, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, you were cutting out a little bit, but I can hear you now.
All right, sorry about that, this is a, a office phone, but we wanted to see if you had an opportunity for the commissioners to interview you for the Parks and Greenway Recreation Board, Advisory Board?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, sorry that somehow we missed the schedule, but we want to go ahead and try to do the interview over the phone.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just, I never got an email confirmation, and so I just never got it in my schedule.
Okay, no worries, well, I'm gonna let Brownie Newman, the chairman, take over the interview process.
Hey, Philip, hey, Philip, hey, it's Brownie Newman, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Hey, great, great, hey, we appreciate you taking time for the call, you know, we've been talking to different folks who have applied, so if it's okay with you, we wanted to just, we just had a couple of questions, you know, we got your, we got your application, but we just wanted to have a chance to kind of quickly, kind of engage in conversation with each of the applicants, so it should only take a few minutes, but, um-
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just, just share with us a little bit about, you know, your interest in serving on the Parks Recreation and Greenways Advisory Board.
Well, that's something that's very concerning and interesting to me at the same time in any city I've ever lived in, is, is quality of life. For me, a big quality of life issue is having greenways, bike paths, alternative means of transportation, all the above, all those things. And I feel like Asheville is getting to the size where that stuff's becoming critical, especially before a lot of the land is used up or developed, and that's already happening a lot. So I feel like we really need to get more direction in the Parks and Rec area, for, especially for greenbelts and bike paths, throughways. As the city grows, I feel like we're, we're kind of falling behind a little bit as far as developing those resources. So I, I really, I'm concerned, I feel like, I feel like I can help, I can at least contribute, give some of my viewpoints, I've lived in big cities, like Dallas, Fort Worth, and I've watched them go through all their growing pains and make mistakes, and then correct some of the mistakes as much as they could, and, you know, they have a big rails, trails program there now, and hundreds of miles of bike, bike lanes and trolley systems throughout parts of the city, you know, alternative means of transportation, and I feel like we really need that here. And this is a city where everybody moves the outdoors, so I feel like, you know, having lots of greenways and talking to counties very much, and like the long range plan of all the bike trails, you know, going through Black Mountain, even all the way to Hickory, making up like the Swan One and Swan Two project. Anyway, that's, that's, I have a vision for the future, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you, we can hear you well.
Sorry, I switched to hand cream and a drawing.
Okay, no, no problem, no problem. All right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's, that's great, that's great. And, so, you've also been involved in the recreation, you've worked, you've worked with the soccer league and the Bunkin County Sports Park, could you talk a little bit more about that and any other experience that you, you know, you have that you think would be relevant to the new advisory board?
Yeah, so, I mean, I've worked with Greenworks a little bit, I was a coach at ADYSA, and I've been to BCSP quite a few times, you know, I think that's a, a great park and a great addition to the county, along with some of the public, of the public spaces. I feel like we need more of those, I think we need to develop those resources more. So that's, that's really what I wanted to do, I'd be, I want to get on the board, part of it for me also is, is to turn and ramp up for people who are already experienced in this area with what's going on, and then also as far as the future planning, the long-term planning that we have, like where are we on that, you know, what kind of funding do we have, how can we get more funding? I feel like I can contribute to that area, so that's, that's what I'm looking for.
Great, that's great. Hey, I'm sorry if you already mentioned this, did you say how long that you've lived in the county now?
Yes, I've lived here six years.
Okay, okay, great, great, um-
Seven, yeah.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, so I got, I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, one is, I know you're interested in getting rid of Kudzu, when you figure out how to do that, you won't have time to work on this board, because you'll be, you'll be traveling the world, so, but-
I think that's a full-time job.
Yeah, you'll be traveling the world if you figure that out.
We're glad that you've personally taken that on.
Yeah, I am, take it on. No, the question I have, the question I have for you is that in the, in the, in the most recent years, there's been a lot of conversations-
I think I got them.
You're one shy.
Oh Shay Brown.
Shay.
Shay Brown.
She was one.
Oh, I got Shay, I got Shay.
You got her.
You got her.
Teresa Williams?
She's three.
Two, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Dusty Allison, we have a lot of ones. So the problem is we've probably got more than we can use here, a lot of really good people too, not here and then.
But you don't have.
One would be good, one would be good.
Lena Richards.
Lena Richards, yeah.
Is in.
Oh yeah, thanks, another three.
One would be good is to pin those on a map. We got the addresses. That would be good.
Um, so, so, you know, we have so many people and we have the balancing of districts. Do y'all wanna just, I mean, this could be just kind of a straw poll, just to kinda see where we're at, some things might emerge, just like people who are clearly wanting to be on there. How do y'all want, any suggestions or I could, I could just ask people.
Just go around. Folks say.
Well. Okay, well, we only can appoint three from each one, right? Um, so, so if we do this, we could all go around, you can get up to three votes for each of the, the districts, right?
Then you're only.
And maybe that'll make it clear who's got the strongest support.
And they said, well, we'll narrow it down to one and two probably.
But you're only gonna do seven if you do that.
Well, I know, but I mean, we'll start tracing.
Yeah, we must have needed to take some more time to interview some more people, I mean, we don't.
I think we should, I think we should try to.
District two.
Do what we can, right?
We need to put it out in district two.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I left a message for Stuart to call me back, I gotta hold the Philip Coe and he was a day off. So I told him we may wanna call him for a phone interview, do y'all wanna do that right now?
They're both in two, which would be great, right?
Yeah, I'll wait.
Are they, they're, so, what did Stuart say again? You didn't get a voicemail?
I just got his voicemail, so I left him a message.
Why don't we interview Philip?
Yeah.
On the phone right now, because if.
Does that one work?
Yes.
Here we need it, and we need to.
Okay, Jasmine. I'm gonna use this.
Okay.
Lamar, I might need your expertise here.
So, are we gonna go ahead and vote on this today?
I kinda feel like it's fresh in our minds, I mean, why, in two weeks from now, I'm gonna forget who else people are.
But if we're gonna do three from each district, we're gonna have to put Philip and Stuart in to get three.
We could do some more interviews coming up this year, for district two, yeah, that'd be my suggestions, like, what's the?
Yeah, I agree with that.
More interviews for two.
Hmm?
More interviews for two.
Yeah, 'cause we gotta hold them for one.
Which isn't surprising.
Yeah, I think we can do it, the reason I like having it.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, 'cause it is.
One in butter, roast grease, two in ounces, probably, people wanna come, they're coming, okay, the other is.
Hello, Philip?
Yeah.
Hey, this is Lamar from Bunkin County Commissioners Office.
Uh, yes, hello Lamar.
Hey, how you doing? We wanted to see if you.
I'm doing well.
I'm sorry, we wanted to see if you, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, you were cutting out a little bit, but I can hear you now.
Alright, sorry about that, this is a, a office phone, but we wanted to see if you had an opportunity for the commissioners to interview you for the Parks and Greenway Recreation, uh, Board, Advisory Board?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, sorry that, um, somehow we missed the schedule, but we wanna go ahead and try to do the interview over the phone.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just, I never got an email confirmation, and so I just never got it in my schedule.
Okay, no worries, well, I'm gonna let Brownie Newman, the chairman, take over the interview process.
Hey Philip, hey Philip, hey, it's Brownie Newman, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Hey, great, great, hey, um, we appreciate you, uh, taking time for the call, you know, we've been talking to different folks who have applied, so. If it's okay with you, we wanted to just, we just had a couple of questions, you know, we got your, we got your application. Um, but we just wanted to have a chance to kind of quickly, kind of engage, uh, in conversation with each of the applicants. So, uh, it should only take a few minutes, but, um.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just, um, just share with us a little bit about, you know, your interest in serving on, uh, the Parks Recreation and Greenways Advisory Board.
Well, that's something that's, uh, very concerning and interesting to me at the same time, in any city I've ever lived in, uh, is, uh, quality of life. For me, uh, a big quality of life issue is having greenways, bike paths, uh, alternative means of transportation, all the above, all those things. Now, I feel like Asheville is getting to the size where that stuff's becoming critical, uh, especially before a lot of the land is, uh, used up or developed, and that's already happening a lot. Uh, so I feel like we really need to get more direction, uh, uh, in the Parks and Rec area, uh, for, especially for greenbelts and bike paths. Uh, throughways. As the city grows, I feel like, uh, we're, we're kinda falling behind a little bit, uh, as far as developing those resources. So I, I really, I'm, I'm concerned, I feel like, uh, I feel like I can help, I can at least contribute, uh, give some of my viewpoints, I've lived in big cities, like Dallas, Fort Worth, and I've watched them go through. All their growing pains and making mistakes, and then correct some of the mistakes as much as they could. Uh, and, you know, they have a big rails, trails program there now, and hundreds of miles of bike, bike lanes. And, um, trolley systems throughout parts of the city, you know, alternative means of transportation, I feel like we really need that here. And this is a city where everybody moves the outdoors. So I feel like, you know, having lots of greenways and pocket. County, very important, and, uh, like the long range plan of all the bike trails, you know, going through Black Mountain, even all the way to Hickory. And being able to like the Swan one and Swan two project, uh, anyway, that's, that's, I have, I have a vision for the future, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you, we can hear you well.
Sorry, I switched to hand cream and a drug.
Okay, no, no problem, no problem. Alright, um.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's, uh, that's great, that's great, and, um. So, you've also been involved in the, um, recreation, you've worked, you've worked with the, uh, soccer league and the Bunkin County Sports Park, could you talk a little bit more about that and any other experience that you. You know, you have, that you think would be relevant to, uh, the new advisory board?
Yeah, so, I mean, I've worked with Greenworks a little bit, uh, I was a coach at A D Y S A, and I've been to B C S P quite a few times. Uh, you know, I think that's a, a great park and, uh, great addition to the county, uh, along with some of the public, of the public spaces. I feel like we need more of those, I think we need to develop those resources more. So that's, that's really what I wanted to do, I would be, I wanna get on the board, part of it for me also is, is to learn and ramp up. For people who are already experienced in this area. With what's going on, and then also, uh, as far as, with the future planning, the long-term planning that we have, like where are we on that? You know, uh, what kind of funding do we have, how can we get more funding? I feel like I can contribute to that area. Uh, that's, that's, that's what I'm looking.
Great, that's great, hey, um, I'm sorry if you already mentioned this, did you say how long that you've lived in, uh, the county, um, now?
Yes, I've lived here six years.
Okay. Okay, great. Great, um.
Seven, yeah.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, so I got, I had a question.
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, one is, uh, I know you're interested in getting rid of Kudzu, when you figure out how to do that, you won't have time to work on this board, 'cause you'll be, you'll be traveling the world, so, but.
I think that's a full-time job.
Yeah, you'll be traveling the world if you figure that out.
We're glad that you've personally taken that on.
Yeah, I am, take it on. No, the question I have, now, the question I have for you is that in the, in the, in the most recent years, there's been a lot of conversations in Asheville and Bunkin County and really everywhere about, about greenways. And, but we, but we have other recreational assets, parks and, uh, you know, et cetera, that, you know, a lot more people can actually probably use and access than greenways. And so, what are your thoughts on, um, you know, improving those or, um?
No, I think, I definitely think with any more improvements, uh, I think that the greenways are building down, uh, the River Arch District, I guess you could call it that. I mean, to me, it seems really haphazard right now, it's, it's spurs here and there, I'm used to, you know, being in a big city like Dallas, where they throw a lot of resources, a lot of money at a project like that. And it goes in really fast, and it's, you know, really got a lot of hardscaping, and, uh, you know, and it comes together really fast, I'm not used to kind of the haphazard nature of some of the projects here. I drive down there now and it's still, it looks like it's half finished and then slapped.
Sure.
I don't know, yeah, I didn't, I, I wanted to see more improvements, I like, with some of the bike paths, I wanna see like more hardscaping going in, more features, like, uh, mountains and, you know, areas of, say, like, you know, you go down to Greenville and, and you go on the trails down there, and they have lots of pull offs and little pocket parks along the river. Uh, they've done a really good job down there, and I, that's been my inspiration, or what Asheville can do.
Yeah.
They, they have a lot of really nice steel concrete bridges going over the river, uh, little scenic pull offs, you know, park benches, playgrounds, stuff like that, it just really makes quality of life a lot better. It makes it, it makes it a place where I really wanna move to, just for that reason alone.
Yeah.
And not to mention all the jobs.
Yeah, the, um, alright, so Philip, uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask the other commissioners, are there any other questions that folks would like to ask? We've kind of gone through, you know, the two or three questions that we've been asking everybody, any other questions any commissioner has?
Uh, okay.
Philip, is there anything else you would like to share with us?
Yeah, I mean, I think the city has so much potential, it's already a great place to live, uh, and that's why I wanna get on board, because I feel it's a, it's a place worth, uh, making changes for. And instead of just up and leaving and like, I could say, oh, I just wanna move to Greenville because we're doing what I want, they're not doing that here. You know, I wanna, I wanna stay here and fight for what's right, basically, in other words, like, let's make it right, let's, let's, uh, let's make it a better place.
Yeah, alright, well, hey, yeah, yeah, that's, that's great, that's great, and thank you, thank you for taking time to talk to us. We don't have much time to talk because we got a lot of applicants, so we're just kind of briefly huddling with folks, so, but it's great to connect with you, and we've got your application, uh, here as well. So, thank you so much for your interest in the, uh, the new advisory board, we really, we're excited about it, we appreciate your, uh, your interest in serving on it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, thank you.
You're welcome, alright, have a great day.
Alright, bye-bye.
How do you, how do you feel, Lamar?
It's all.
Okay, I hope one thing to inter- to interject Brownie.
Yeah. How do we know it's all?
I think, uh. I'm ninety percent sure it's all. I just said it's all.
It's all for sure, Hall.
So, uh.
I don't even wanna go there.
So I had an email, when I checked my email, I had an email from Stuart.
Oh, what'd he say?
And he said, Stacy, unfortunately, I returned to town with the flu. I was hoping I would be feeling better to meet today, but I am not. I respect that I may have missed this great opportunity, however, if the board would like to consider a, a reschedule, I'm sure that with my past civic engagement and history, I could be an asset to the committee. I apologize for late notice, but I just woke up from trying to.
Okay, good, that's great, great.
We all know how that is.
But I think you have the flu, we don't. So here's the deal with Stuart, okay? Since, I mean, I don't know him personally.
I do.
But, but it's great little business, you know, and if he's not, if he's not a, you know, uh, a one-trick pony, as they say, as far as, you know, he's advocating for, he's, he's probably got that, but, you know, I mean, I'm saying, but. We could, if we could get him.
Let's just put it up here and just kind of make a note, you did not interview, so we'll decide what to, Stuart, what's his last name again?
Coe.
Coe.
C O W L E.
Coe.
Coe.
Coe, that would be extremely disappointing in y'all if y'all appointed Philip to lead.
Yeah, me too. That's a good job, huh?
Well, let's, let's start with, let's start with one, and so everybody gets up to three votes, so don't raise your hand more than three times, right? I'm gonna go through and I'm gonna list each one, and you can vote up to three times, and we'll just kind of see, like, this is not a binding vote, we're just kind of seeing where, you know, people's current thinking is at, you know, what matters when we vote out there, but.
Yeah, let me, let me just say this, I'm just gonna say this, please. Those are really good candidates, both of those, so we need to, we need to be really careful that we're.
Just for point of emphasis, if, so it won't be in confusion, Philip is Coe, C O E. Um, Stuart is Coe.
Thank you.
Stuart is Coe.
I'm just, I'm just, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So three per district.
Three per district mass.
Yep, okay, great.
Alright, hang on, and so you need to think about who you're gonna vote for before you start voting, right, so let's just, I, I need a second to remember who I'm gonna vote for.
Yeah, let me see.
Alright, I've got my three, y'all have yours, or up to three, you don't have to vote for three.
I'm not wondering if it's two.
Oh, she was good.
She was?
Oh, yeah, Anne, she's great, she was great.
Yeah. District one.
Okay, everybody ready? Alright, Susan Bean. Sam Mason. Derek Turner. Dusty Allison.
Alright, hang on a minute, hang on a minute, who else is left?
Uh, Shay Brown is the.
And I get three, right?
You get.
Up to three.
Alright, so Dusty. And Shay Brown. Alright.
Come on, add my thirty.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't, I didn't vote for Susan Bean, I wouldn't vote for her too.
Guys, y'all got, y'all gotta be.
Yeah.
So that, uh, doing this.
Well, that is better.
Yeah, doing this, doing this, change it, go back.
It's okay, you can do that.
This is, this is formal.
It's okay, I talked, I'm all right with it.
Trouble, it's trouble.
Um, well, so.
There is no way that Susan Bean is as, as strong as Derek is.
It seems that way for you, but, you know, when all of us come out of the way, you know. Yeah.
I don't know, are you?
I tell you what, well, why don't we, we gotta tie, we gotta tie here, let's go through the rest and see where we're at, it sounds like Sam and Dusty have, you know, have strong support. Alright, let's go to this one, is everybody good with Anne Babcock?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Definitely heard.
Yeah, she's strong, so.
Alright, so we only have three out, if, if we're not comfortable with the three, we can further interview for this position, if we need to, right, so that's, that's not essential. Some people have spoken up for Stuart, but not everybody's met him yet, so.
Yeah.
You wanna maybe invite him back for an interview?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can do him right before the meeting.
Two weeks from now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe invite him.
Alright. We'll re-interview, uh, Stuart. Now.
Put it back out. That's what I'm doing.
Well, we can also look at who else is from that district on the list, if there's anybody else.
We should do that first before we put it back out.
Yeah.
We should bring that list in here and look at it.
Does somebody have the list?
That's what we should do.
Of all the applicants?
Oh, I do.
Lamar, if you could look at who else we have from District two, that'd be great.
Give me one second.
Um, so, you know, some of Philip Coe's comments about Greenville, you know, uh, whatever, I think he actually made some points, I think he actually made his.
I think he's, I think he's right. No, I think he's, he's in his car, he's in his car and is waving Greenville, eh?
Yeah, yeah, so I actually, if you look at his application, I think he actually brings a lot of interesting stuff to the table, um, so I'm, I'm open to.
Well, he's always waving Greenville.
What are, where are other people at on that person, so they don't, they don't want.
Once he got serious about what he was saying, he talked about parks and the pullovers and the, you know.
Yeah, it's all good stuff.
That was good stuff.
So your fourth?
I mean, I.
I'll probably get there.
Okay, let's just go around, okay, 'cause we, you know, we don't wanna appoint, I don't wanna, we don't want someone that.
Yeah.
Majority of support, but.
I'd like to talk to more people in the district, yeah.
Okay, so.
I would not be inclined, I'd say.
Yeah.
You're not there yet, okay, alright.
We got one good.
So we have four additional people that applied that were not interviewed that are from District two.
Oh, we were like.
Um, Daniel Bradley. Um, he's a employer for the Department of Justice.
Oh, yeah, he was at A O S A.
Um, then we have Jay Fine, who is the president, owner-operator, Fine, uh, psychological associate.
He's the one that said Tuesdays and Thursdays don't work for him.
Yeah, he's the one that said that we're withdrawing his application.
Then we have Kathleen Morris, and we don't have any, she's retired. And then we have Carol Peterson, who called, don't have, she's retired as well, and she actually.
She's the owner of the mission.
She actually, she actually called this morning.
That's a point, Karen.
And wanted to know why she.
Can I give you that?
Heck, yeah.
Let's just. We all know her, right?
How does she not like the cut?
We were just talking about this earlier today, when you know, we just picked her, nobody knew, nobody knew her name.
I think it was the timing was such, uh.
Remember taking Bill Stanley's name off a building soon?
I think it was the same night, I think it was, we were just figuring stuff, yeah.
I mean, she's on the, uh, sports commission, obviously.
The sports commission.
She's really involved in this stuff.
Yeah.
Alright, are people good with that?
Yes, I'm in her.
Do we need to, I mean, just for, I, I just want us to be consistent, not to be too much of a stickler, but are we gonna interview everyone or do it on?
Who should?
I, I, I would be, I would be my preference, that we, everyone go through exactly the same.
We bring everybody in.
Okay, listen, by.
It could be phone if we can't do person, but.
The only, I mean, I tend to agree, I mean, the only thing is, is like, if literally everybody knows her, you know, then maybe it's different.
But I feel like making an exception for a former commissioner to just, I, I don't know, my, my, I would either just.
Let's do it, okay.
Probably call her.
Well, she's not expecting it, I would want her to be a little bit prepared, right, 'cause right now she's not. Alright, well, we'll, okay, so we're gonna.
She did call this morning. She called this morning, yeah.
Yeah, she called this morning and asked why she wasn't, um, interviewing.
I tell you what, could, could, could you call her and tell her the board would like to talk to her, like, in like, uh, the next, well, if she's available, we'd like to talk to her now.
Call her.
But, but don't turn her on the spot, like, I'd like for someone else to call her and see if we could call her in like ten minutes, right?
I think she, I think.
Okay, I'll call her. Well, if you have a.
And she's all like.
Well, and, and we didn't.
I didn't make the interview?
We just told her that at this time, because we didn't know, obviously, how the process is gonna go, 'cause we did say that it may be for the interviews, because we didn't know who was gonna be selected.
We only had so much time today, and it was so obvious that you were gonna get appointed, and Brownie's.
So just, just, just for clarity, so y'all have to know what the conversation was.
We're just.
But then Jasmine really wanted to talk to you, so she's the real one, thank you.
I'm all about process.
Oh, alright, okay, let's go to number three while we're, while we're, uh, waiting to, we're talking to.
I've had my life.
Okay, let's.
Okay, so here's the deal, there's several.
Okay, so, so, I mean, Stuart, if Stuart and Carol, Stuart, Carol and Anne would be great, that'd be great, Stuart and Carol and Anne would be good too.
And it would be two.
What do you want for three of them?
I'd love to talk to Stuart.
I'd like to talk to Stuart.
I know that is us one.
Yeah, he was on my shortlist.
Who's Stuart?
Yeah.
I know him, I know him, he's a good guy.
I'm a big fan of him, we take calendar. I would like to say we were all good, we were great. That's awesome, yeah, yeah.
Alright, are people ready?
Can I give you? Yeah, I, I three, right.
You got, well, no, let's do it, let's do it, um, all together.
Okay, so, what about Jennifer then?
Okay, so her brother works for Parks and Rec, and what's the position there?
He's on marketing.
Marketing. I'll tell you, I'm not super comfortable with it personally.
Well, what's, why don't we, why don't we do that one last?
I wouldn't vote for anybody.
Let's just do the last, do the, do her last.
She's not one of my three.
Cause we make it higher.
Does that meet the threshold or something?
She's not one of my three.
She was my first favorite.
Not mine.
So we see, okay, that.
I hope she was, she was one of my two.
She was good, she was in there.
She's not my three.
But we all two of us with that.
Well, here's my suggestion, I mean, if, if she's a serious consideration, some of the other ones where people have a business and stuff, I feel like it should be pretty clear when they need to recuse themselves and when they don't. This, to me, I'd like to get a legal opinion on it, frankly.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I just don't know, like, if that's a fair line.
I mean, from a legal perspective, it's not a conflict of interest, and until you can do anything that would influence the expenditure of funds, which they're never gonna be able to do.
They're gonna make recommendations to the county commission on funding of projects.
I don't think that we would ever use them in that regard, that's not what the.
That's what I, that's what I see their role as.
But that's not what the charter says for their.
They're advising the county commission on parks and recreation matters, like, how is that not gonna be part of what they do?
Um, it's generally not a, a spot for, um, advisory boards to comment on, like, direct funding matters, particularly when it comes to, like, employee salaries and such.
But you know, one of the problems that I had is, is sometimes we gotta make sure it's not a perceived conflict of interest, and by her having a, what is it, a brother who works in the department? Good, yeah, I can't.
And Chris is aware, he knows it's.
He knows.
Are you talking about departmental budget and you're talking about major projects, I think, is that?
Well, yeah, I don't think they would like.
This body will advise us on like this greenway or this park, be inclusive, like.
But it's not gonna put more money in Chris's pocket.
No, no, right, but that's.
Yeah, I mean, they, they're gonna advise us on what the public is saying, that there's a need for.
Yeah.
I mean, staff and, staff will take that and then the commission will go on the money.
Yeah.
Let's, let's go to three, like, so you.
Well, now we're talking about.
Alright, Jennifer Bubinik, it's also worth noting that Kelly missed the application deadline, she's the only one on there that, that got to put her application in later than everybody else.
Okay. Alright, Jennifer Bubinik. Kelly's got it, Bubinik, you got one?
Well, uh, that is one of my three.
Okay, alright, anybody else, hang on, I'm not trying to rain on, I'm just standing.
Yeah, yeah, anymore I think about it, I don't, I don't have three for number three, for Thursday.
I don't have three yet either, but.
I don't have two, Jennifer would have my three.
Alright, Jennifer.
Jennifer's gonna be.
One. Uh, Kelly Sparks. Came in late, but she took her time to see. Uh, Teresa Williams?
Yes.
Alright, everybody?
Yeah.
She's gotta go somewhere.
Yeah, we need her.
I don't know where she at, but.
Ally Howell?
Hang on a minute, Ally Howell.
She's our last one.
Oh, from Beverly Hills.
From Beverly Hills.
Beverly, Beverly Hills, yeah.
She seemed really, I mean, everyone seemed really nice, or some.
She didn't understand.
Elena Richard.
Elena, and then let's come back.
Lena.
Richards.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so we got two obvious ones here.
I think, for me, I'll just say it, that if there's no conflict, then, um, Jennifer's the, probably the best, if there's no conflict, it's just my opinion, if there's no conflict, I don't know. I was, I was perfectly fine until she said, until you said she works for Parks and Rec. Okay, really?
I, I, I honestly will say I don't know.
So remind me of Kelly's part, so I don't need a Kelly's.
She, she's.
Totally.
So. I think Carol is waiting on y'all to call.
Alright, was whenever you're ready.
Call ready now?
And Ally wasn't there.
I don't know, I don't remember the name.
Ally wasn't there.
Kelly's part, wasn't she the one that really didn't have a lot of experience or anything, but I think she would have been a pretty good.
She's from First Bank.
First Bank, right. She did, she had pretty short answers.
Yeah, Ally was. Ally was sort of brought the perspective of like local parks utilizer.
Yeah.
Like, kinda like community member, doesn't work in the field, but like, active.
Yeah.
Use it, it sounded awful.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, Jennifer felt, as did Jennifer, at the conflict issue, I'm gonna think about it.
I agree.
If he worked in a different.
You're gonna have to have a clear.
It was a different department, I'm just barely sure.
Yeah, I mean, uh.
Yeah, I do.
You're gonna have to have a. I'm okay with Ally, if y'all, if other people, I'd be willing to put a vote down, but, or we could also look at who else is in District Three that we didn't interview, if we wanna do more interviews, but I can look at Ally.
Eric Ernst is the one that.
Who?
I was disappointed didn't call back for his, um, schedule.
I should know.
Yeah, Youngblood, he's, he's. Partner.
Oh, he's great, he's like a.
Yeah, he's like health and wellness student.
Running up and down some stuff.
Yeah.
He's like a Youngblood.
He's like a trail.
I think we've got enough to decide, personally, I don't think we need to open this up, it's nothing like District Two.
Alright, so is there support, is there support for Ally?
Yeah, I, I would support Ally if we're a hundred percent sure that Jennifer's a conflict, if Jennifer's not a conflict, she's a most qualified.
Yeah, I would say.
There's no question.
I really like Jennifer.
I liked Ally.
Yeah.
I like that name. Who's all for Ally? You like me?
If I have to make the choices that are in front of us.
In front of us, I would.
Ally over.
Go with Ally.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Let's do it, let's do it. Alright, I'd like to have like four or something, report. Alright, uh, let's call Carol.
Can we just make you? Sure.
You might even hear.
Alright, let's call Carol.
Mike. Said she's good. What, not her second in the chair?
Yes, I guess.
You're right, you're right. You're absolutely right.
Y'all that took good notes. Everyone, Shay, what did, what, I mean Shay here, and my point systems differ from everybody else, is started out real bad, but then bam bam bam, the end of it was good.
She talked about.
Carol, hey, good afternoon, it's Brownie Newman, how are you?
Well, hey, Brownie Newman, I'm fine, and how are you?
I'm good, I'm good, I'm sitting down here with, with a whole bunch of other county commissioners, and we wanted to see if you're able to talk to us for a few minutes about the new Parks and Recreation and Greenways Advisory Board.
Sure, be happy to.
Awesome, awesome, well, we're, we're excited about this new board, and we are glad you're interested in it. So, uh, we just, we're just, you know, uh, and of course, I think every single person in this room knows you very well, but, um, so we talked about maybe not even needing to do an interview with you, but just for the sake of treating everyone the same we're doing, we're, we wanted to ask you the same questions we've asked some of the other applicants, okay? Great. So for.
Bring it up, bring it up.
Yes, ma'am, so first, just, could you just tell us a little bit about your reasons for being interested in serving on this new advisory board?
Well, to, to be, um, quite very honest with you, I was contacted by Josh O'Connor to, to see if I would be interested, and I think Josh realized my, our family and my interest in sports and recreation and greenways and all of the above, and in fact, I think I was, um, part of the group that started this whole initiative back several years ago. So, of course, I'd like to see it through to fruition, and I, I know it's gonna take a lot of work to do that, and I would just be real pleased to be part of that.
That's great, that's great, and, um, we know that you've got, you know, of course, lots of different kinds of experience in the community, anything you'd, like, you'd like to say just about experience as it relates to this new Parks Recreation Greenway Advisory Board?
Well, I think it's important that we have, um, folks on the board, Brownie, who bring a lot of, um, different thoughts to the board, and, um, you know, represent a lot of aspects of the community, I think we never need to forget who we represent, and that is the citizens of Buckham County, and that means we need to have folks on these various boards for the county that represent those citizens, I think we never need to forget that. So, it can't just be people who are involved directly in, um, sports-related things, it needs to be some, some average citizens, who I think are the best citizens we have, and a wide range of folks that represent each one of the, the districts in our, in our county, so, uh, you know, just a, a wide variety of folks on the board who bring, um, you know, their life experiences to the board, because this is so important, you know, that we have, you know, that we have recreation for our citizens, we have greenways, we have parks, I mean, I go through by Canyon Creek Park every day and see the, the buses that come in in the summertime, see the children swimming, and, you know, the soccer that goes by on it, I mean, it's just unbelievable how important parks and recreation and greenways are, so we've got to do this right, we've absolutely got to do it right, we've got one chance to do it, so, I'd like to be a part of that.
That's, that's great, that's great, and, um, so, last question I have, some other commissioners might have some other questions too, but, um, the other question we've been asking all the applicants has been, when you think about this board, what would you like to see it accomplish over the next several years?
Well, I, you know, I always believe in starting off with something that you can really accomplish, don't go so big that you can't look back and sit, say, when you're worried with this, and I'm not saying start off small, but start off with things that can be accomplished, citizens can see you're having success, citizens want to be a part of it, and it grows from there, don't get so voluminous with it, that you accomplish nothing and it just drops by the wayside. Start small, make it, make it something that appeals to a wide range of people, be successful, build on that success, and go from there.
That's great, that's great, alright, uh, commissioners, any other questions for Carol?
Hey, Carol, Joe Belcher, this is kind of in my question for the, for the applicants, so, of the last several years, not only.
Hey, Joe.
Hey, how are you? Over the last several years, of the last several years, not just in, you know, Buckham County and Asheville, but, you know, really, a lot of other areas, greenways has been a topic of discussion, very popular, very, very trendy, you know, people are, you know, uh, if you, if you mention them, they're all for them, and everybody wants to gather around that goal, however, you know.
Sure.
Parks, Parks and Recreation involves so much more assets than that, and, uh, and my, you know, my concern is some of those may have been left behind, not intended, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, if, if some of that might be true, what would you see your role to, to change that? Well, I'll, I'll, you know, there's no question, Joe, that through the years, Buckham County's been a leader in anything that, that is trendy, and, you know, and I, I think we, you know, we hang our hat on that, but you don't want to go that way with everything you do, um, you know, you, you've got, I'm, I'm gonna repeat myself, you've got to look at what's important to each part of our population, you know, greenways, of course, that, that all ties into conservation, and, you know, and, and saving the mountains, and having a place that the greenways can be, or what's gonna happen down on the woods in Greenway, we're gonna get the extra funds in order to, to complete the study to do that, I mean, we, we've got to look at so many aspects of it, but, but I agree with you, um, recreation and individual citizens, what's important to them, it's a whole gamut of things, we need to, to look, you know, take in consideration, but we want Buckham County to always be the leader in what's, what's in people's minds, and right now, greenways are, are on people's minds, whether you live in the city, or in Barnetville, or in Campbell, like you do, wherever you live, you know, we, we've got, we've got to, to, to make it a topic that's, that's important to all, all of our citizens, so, so let's do the best we can.
Alright, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Great, alright, anybody else, any other questions?
Hi, Carol, sure, I have got a question, I'm unable to talk.
Okay, alright.
Hey, Carol, Mike Prior said, hey, his voice is pretty weak, you wanna make sure you heard him, okay?
Oh, I, I bet he, I can barely, I've got two, two puppies in the house that aren't outside, so, I'll, I'll.
Alright, and Carol, that, I think we covered all the questions we wanted to go over, uh, so I think we're good, but thank you so much for your interest in serving on the board, obviously, you bring a wealth of experience to it, and we really appreciate your, your interest and willingness to, to serve on, on this new board.
I'm, I'm excited, Brownie, and I, I, I appreciate, I know you folks have had a long day, and it's just getting started, and I understand that, so, go get it, go get it.
Thank you.
Hey, yeah, Carol, bye.
Tell Bruce to hang, alright, bye bye.
Okay, see ya, bye.
It's gone?
She's gone.
Yeah, she hung up.
Okay, everybody good with Carol?
Yes.
Alright, so, uh, what's left, um.
We just need one person.
We need one spot for two, but we're gonna interview Stuart.
Yeah, you gotta break the tie on one.
Oh, we gotta break the tie on one. Uh, Derek and Susan, so. I like them both, I don't have a real strong opinion about it.
We're about three. Got tied in there too?
No, three, we got Teresa, Ally, and Lena.
Yeah, that's pretty easy, three.
So they're good, here we got Carol and Ann.
I mean, for me, you know, I'll just say this, um, to me, Derek brings a lot of assets to the, and I just met the guy, I just met him, I don't know him from anybody, but he brings, I mean, he's got, he's got a Recreation Sports Science Masters, he has connections with, Albert Bound runs that business on the river, he bring, he bring, he bring a perspective that other people will not bring, even Stuart will bring, Stuart's a downtown business man, so they probably run in the same circles, totally different, uh, perspective.
Yeah. Now that I see the foreboard.
Yeah.
That would be comfortable switching on it to Derek. I could go, I could honestly go with the ring, but I think he does bring a voice that.
Your point's a good one.
When we picked up Ally, and we picked up the, the lady with the, um.
Right.
With, with, uh.
Teresa, Teresa?
Yeah, Teresa, when we picked them up, I mean, we really picked up some down-to-earth.
Yeah.
Input, and I think that some Susan's strength is there.
Okay, alright.
No problem, no, we're there.
We did it.
Good job, y'all.
I know, alright, we got it.
This is a good board.
Yeah, it is, it's a good board.
It's a good, uh, alternative.
Yeah.
So, Derek.
Yeah, we need to go back.
We have to go back. Like that, that's the only reason why I put Derek over.
Let's review that.
How about that?
That, um, this, I did give you, on our boards and commission policy, that I highlighted that little piece of paper, just, if you wanna read it just for, and clarification, that's the policy that we adopted.
So where would the conflict lie? Let me, let me, let me read it. So no applicant will be considered for appointment to a board, commission, committee, or authority where he or she has a close familial business or other associational relationship with a person employed by such board, committee, or authority, a close familial relationship means a spouse, parent, child, brother, sister, grandparent, or grandchild, the term includes the step-half and in-law relationships.
So that only kicks out Jennifer. This is, that's strictly family relationship.
Here, let me reread the business.
Read the business.
No applicant will be considered for a board, commission, committee, or authority where he or she has a close familial business or other associational relationships with a person employed by such board, committee, or authority.
Who?
So, that's true.
So, a person employed by, so, does he have a business relationship with a person employed by? And then I think, I think this is the issue that kinda came up as we were discussing it, that covers that, and then the secondary conflict issue is, is some matter coming before the board, from which he would derive personal financial benefit or business benefit?
By renewing his lease, he couldn't vote on it.
And in which case, recuse will.
Well, he wouldn't be doing that, but he wouldn't.
Right, exactly, that's correct, right, yes.
He wouldn't be doing that on that board.
Well, again, this is the board, I mean, you know, exactly what the board's gonna do, I mean, it's gonna kind of, it's gonna kind of live into it, that is really, um, you know, like a real specific contract thing, I don't, you know, I don't know if that would even go to the board or not, what, what do you think, Josh, I mean, thinking about that specific question, is that a decision that would ever be looked at by that board?
You think what you're looking at is, we're gonna, if, if he doesn't renew that lease, which there's a chance he may not, um, we're gonna be asking for input on what to do with that property next, and I think that's where it becomes problematic, is because.
I think he would, if he is on, he would just have to, not only not vote, he would just have to, like, step out of the room and not participate in any of those discussions, is my sense of how.
About that piece of problem?
About, if he has a business interest in it, he would just have to have no participation in that discussion.
Well, you also have to think that anybody that puts a canoe into the French Broad and comes in or out at one of our parks, like, is utilizing his business, and so any decision that he's saying he should do this way, this way, or one way or the other, he is actually helping his business out in a way that's not necessarily fair to the other outfitters that may not be able to make that, and since over half of our parks are river access points, and it does give him a lot of undue influence that other people aren't, aren't gaining.
Well, it does, or, or he becomes their voice, you know, depends on how good he is, and I don't know it, I don't know.
Let's try to think of some, let me try to think of some.
As we said, it's not over yet.
I mean, this came up a lot with the Early Talent Committee, like, and.
Yeah.
I, I feel like we're, we're still working our way through, but there are people who are on that committee who are actively working in the field, because that's who our local experts are, stakeholders, and it's, I, I think, what we have found is that, like, talking about the issue, reinforcing the issue, providing guidance and staff support around the, the need to recuse, is, you know, like, him being involved in decisions that affect the broad ecosystem of the river, literally and figuratively, doesn't strike me as an inherent conflict, if it was a decision that came down to, like, does this stand a direct, like, is it a direct business benefit from this decision that he'd need to recuse, that's how I would approach it, I think.
If he was opening another business that he was gonna lease property back from the county, that's a conflict, or if he was making a decision on his current lease, I guess, I don't know, we need to ask, we need to ask Michael or something.
I, I agree, um, this, so, originally, that whole park didn't state that, so, Fru looked up legal information from other boards, and he input that, because it really just said conflict of interest, so, um, I think to get, um, you know, legal representation and kind of clear this up may be helpful, just my thoughts. Um, in, in the broad scope of things, I think, you know, if, if it's an individual item that he could recuse himself over the broad good of the whole board, may be what you're kind of looking at, I think.
We didn't have, nobody else that was really.
Well, I don't know, okay.
What about Shay?
Who?
No. Shay?
See, I like Shay, I thought finished up really well, but it started out good, but I've done a number still instead of what I.
Talking about, like, the department transportation work on the rails to trails, like, that kind of thing, or?
It's kind of the marketing too, I mean, and part of the idea is, like, getting word out, and stuff like that, that's kind of what she does, right?
We have, uh, Lena brings that also, I mean, if, if, if we're not gonna move forward with Derek, my vote would go back to Susan, who I thought brought a lot of people in, respected us, made a difference on someone who's.
I think the, uh, the.
Derek, if he was at that, well, he, he could bring up a lot.
We need to get a legal.
He is good.
Or we can just avoid anything, I mean, we can also just, like, launch the board with nothing that has the complications of, you know, like, if we go with Susan or Shay, there's no, no one.
No one.
I would really love her to be on it, but, I mean, he literally has a lease coming.
Yeah.
For recreational business purposes, right?
Yeah.
And, and this is like, it's too much, it's not that, he's so involved, he'll probably be involved right now or what, you know?
Why, I'd be my vote back to Susan.
I think that'd be such, yeah.
Yeah, I'll go back to Susan.
Alright.
I'm hanging in Shay.
Yeah.
I think, you know, the.
Well, we're not sure, can we just not point seven tonight and say there are still two open slots, 'cause the only reason why I had Susan was because I was afraid we weren't gonna put Derek on. She wasn't as strong as the other.
Um, I mean, I think she said, if y'all want to, I feel like we've got a good group.
We do it before, we appointed seven and say, that's probably.
What do we got now?
So I think we need to talk to Stuart, unless Stuart talks out of his mind, surely the goodness he's gonna end up in.
Yeah, he would be on there.
And then we'd be done. Partly, partly, Robert, you know, we've got, like, another afternoon like this, two weeks from now, so I'd kind of like to just put it to that.
Well, here, here's, here's the thing with this.
So Fru is on his way.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
I think the way you put it the last time, though, I mean, he's, he's leasing, he's a property firm, and he's being used for recreation, you know, so. Only thing about Susan, and I don't, you know, and I don't know that it means even having conversations, hopefully, some of the other people will influence her and get her out of her box, because I think her circle's got us wrong, I think she was sweet, I think she answered all, all the questions, but I think, you know, and that's one of the things I really like, when all these other, everybody showed up, I mean, we have all these different schools of thought, you know, and, but I could go with her.
I mean, I thought every, I mean, and just, like.
She was engaged that entire time, she was probably a good communicator, so she probably did well.
She brings that, that background in public administration, and that, to me, I thought that's someone who would understand how a body like this works, yeah, she'd bring that perspective of, like.
Because she had, she had.
Susan B.
She has an M P A from U T E, so she'd be bringing in that kind of sense of, like, oh, here's how government. She has an MPA from UT, so she'd be bringing in that kinda sense of like, oh, here's how government, here's how a body like this.
Taking her little sister out to the park.
Yeah.
Big brothers, big sisters, that's kind of what I was going, uh, my favorite. That's pretty cool.
Y'all don't have to over say.
All right, all right. Susan's in. Derek's out. So, don't even matter?
I like that. I can hear what it says.
I wanna hear, really.
We'll go back and ask.
All right.
All right, so here's, here's, here's the situation. We have a very good applicant for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Although there were, you know, definitely some arguments for some other candidates, just aside from the issue I'm gonna tell you about, but he, um, he runs a business where he's leasing land from the county for recreational business purposes. There's gonna be future negotiations over that land, and that property he touches on will, a lot of the related issues that will come before the board will all kinda interface with his business. But he brings, for those very reasons, he brings a lot to the table in terms of knowledge and experience. So.
Yep.
Does he have, does he have, does he have an information?
Tell him why he owns.
Tell him why he owns.
He owns the River Outfitters.
French Broad Outfitters.
French Broad Outfitters.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm aware of this. This popped up last week. So I,
I, I thought it was important that the board understand what his interests were, so that's why I pulled up that little bit of information about what he owned, what his assumed name was, and how he was connected. He doesn't have any direct financial interest in the county, of course. He's not gonna necessarily profit from being on this board. I don't see how he could profit. I think that's the important thing. Unless you all think otherwise somehow, I, I don't really think there's a direct conflict, but it's just something I wanted to make sure you apparently are, that you were aware of his connection with that business and his role with, on the, on this board.
So on the issue of like his actual business relationship with the county, he could just recuse himself from any decisions related to that if they came before the board?
Yeah, I think, I think maybe one good way to look at it is if Mike owned a business that was gonna be rezoned. And that rezoning would allow him to build or expand upon that business. Clearly, that's a conflict of interest and you can't vote, you have to recuse. So this isn't near that at all. So I think with you being aware of it, and I don't know how he might have presented it himself, but I think it's, I don't think it's a direct conflict that would.
What about, like, what if, I mean, again, he seems like a really nice guy, so. But just, but like, you know, if it's like, I have this business that's involved in directly promoting, you know, kind of floating in the river, I wanna, I'm gonna advocate for all this stuff that will. Is it, is it close enough to that that, like, that's, you know, I'm gonna try to steer county resources towards building out more recreational infrastructure that would really directly, my business would probably benefit from that. I mean, along with, of course, benefiting quality of life in our community. So I mean, like, it's, but is it too close for that kinda stuff?
I don't know. By the same token of if, like when Nathan, like when we initiated county wide zoning, just because you own property in the county means you, doesn't mean you can't vote for zoning. So he's just the voice at the table. He's one of nine.
Yeah.
So it's diluted, and he doesn't have to find a say, and he doesn't say anything about it.
I think if it was like, oh, we're gonna build a giant pier on the edge of the property you rent. You'd have to recuse, but if it's like.
All right, I'm back with Derek now. I have a team here.
I say something. He also got two other locations on the river.
He does.
Oh, yeah.
He don't lease them for us.
So he advocates for the river.
Yeah.
But y'all just sit there and said he could put stuff at different places on the river to benefit him. Well.
He's got, did Parkview Old Workout at Cameron or?
I like it.
The idea he brought was like, let's have like direction, let's have addresses on the river so people can call 911.
I mean, he has.
Like, that's a kinda like, that's a, that's, he brought, he had to be, I'm really gonna make a catch, he's the only person who brought two really specific ideas to the table for improving safety.
I agree. One of those ideas, though, that the access number, we did that months ago, and he kind of dug your bones into something that we were already in the process of, so I'd have trouble writing in with our idea.
Well, thanks for your criticism, but I, I don't see his membership as being a direct conflict.
All right, let's just do it over again. Derek, who was Derek?
Back to Derek. So taking, who was taking off?
Susan. Susan's out. Derek's back in.
My work here's.
Thank you.
I'll see y'all soon.
Thanks.
What is that? What, what he said, his dad said, he says, he says it's all a hobby, he said you make money with the sun, so that's why.
All right. All right, hey, good job everybody. Let's do this. We're, we're behind schedule. Uh, well, sure. We're supposed to interview Mr. Lamar Joyner and.
Don Moore.
Don Moore to do their reviews, but. Um, we're supposed to start this about forty-five minutes ago. So, um, why don't we, why don't we take a, well, procedurally, Michael should have stayed here for this, I think procedurally, so that's all closed session. I think we need to adjourn this meeting, and then we would need to go back into closed session to talk to Lamar.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
You have to adjourn this meeting and then open up, if you're gonna do that, open up the.
And when we, when we start the closed session, I think first it should just be the commission to kinda just get organized, and then we'll invite our staff and.
Can I ask one question?
No.
No.
We'll take up, well.
None of this.
Well, Jerry, do you have anything to say? You did your. It's a good question. How, how do you feel like we did on the interview, say? Any comments?
My comment?
Yeah.
A good comment.
You don't have to, though.
No comment.
No comment.
I do mine.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Just, just. Just for clarity, um, so we are planning on interviewing Stuart at the next, before the next meeting?
Yes.
Um, so do you have a time that you want to?
Let's do them first before we do everybody else. Like, we're right.
What else we do?
We got the old people, the strategic partnership.
Oh, yeah.
So, so are y'all going to interview strategic partnership next time as well?
Are we interviewing?
So today is supposed to be not getting the people that we wanna interview, but I just didn't know when y'all planned to interview them. But that can be a discussion later, I just needed to know.
Well, let's, can we just talk about that for a second, since, cause it's, 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 we're in an open meeting now, it's the same stuff, let's figure out what our game plan is for what we're gonna do now.
Did we definitively decide to interview them?
I was sitting on wood, but I don't know.
So right now we only have two for this, two, am I correct?
Yes.
For which, for Parks and Rec?
Yes.
That's correct. And then the plan to interview Stuart.
Then he would meet in the third.
And then see what, see where we're at after that.
Okay.
That's right.
Totally blank. So Jerry, you had no comment?
All right. So on the agenda tonight.
It's a short agenda. It's pretty short.
Um.
Don't say that.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
Whatever you say, you're.
You did it right before the review.
Sorry, sorry. That's, that's all the kiss of death.
All right, it says, it says, we're going with strategic partnership grants committee.
We had a ten o'clock.
So, uh, and Lamar, you circulated an email on Friday about this?
And with the, I attached the actual applications and spreadsheet again, but you do have the spreadsheet. I made a hard copy.
Where is that?
It's in your packet that I will put at your spot once you.
I feel like we should probably spend a few minutes, we may not get to the personnel stuff today. I feel like we need to talk about what we're gonna do on, are we gonna do interviews or not? Like, that's the first decision to make. If we are gonna do interviews, people need to be preparing to nominate who you want to interview.
Well, we ought, we ought to interview Don.
Well, I agree with that, but we're just gonna run out of time, and this is on our agenda, so otherwise, we're gonna go into a meeting and we're gonna be completely disorganized, so we need to have a game plan. Y'all are gonna do.
Let me go tell them that we're going.
Tell them we're, this is just taking longer and we need a little more time. Let me go get that spreadsheet real quick. Is it already up here?
No, I. You want, you want to get for everybody?
Yeah, keep in mind.
Can we take five?
Let's take five.
Does anybody, I want one of these. Anybody else?
I'll be right back.
Nah.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah, it is.
The people we would like to.
All right, we turn it off, please.
Are we done?
We need to decide what process we're gonna use to make the appointments to uh, the strategic partnership grants committee. And Lamar, how many are we doing on this one? Nine again?
I'm pretty sure it is nine. I think it's the same basic process, um, group per district.
Let me go get my other paper just to clarify, y'all can be talking. Okay, um. I just, I just don't know how we could do this without interviewing people again, right? That's my personal thing. What, what do other people think? I just don't know. I know some of these people.
Yeah.
That makes sense. I mean, it's an important role.
Do.
I might just make one. I hope we can, you know, reach out and get some representation from some smaller. I wanna make sure that it's not all the bigger groups, bigger nonprofits where they work. We just have to be really careful when we're selecting, cause these people will be asking for money.
Well, and like, like with, uh, the, the early childhood education, if they have a financial interest in it, they can't serve.
No.
That's right.
They cannot serve one at all. Cause this is, they have only one job, just to recommend funding. That's their only job, right? And Parks and Recreation is kind of all about, you know, all kinds of stuff. This is just about recommendations of money, so they can't have any financial complications. Do, um, do we want to just go ahead and kind of, um, take a second, look at the list, and then maybe go around and we can identify the people that we want to interview for, right? And everyone can, let's give me your first and your second choices. Let's see how many we have, and then if we need to add more, we can add more to the list. And on Monday, Lamar sent the, I'm sorry, Friday, Lamar sent their, um, applications around.
Susan.
Let's shoot.
You got a financial analyst and a buyer health, I would think he's out.
They're probably not gonna get any county money early.
I am. Not for strategic partnership.
He would get motivated.
I mean, I know a handful of these people, but there, to me, there's only one who has had any extensive amount of experience working in the nonprofit sector to understand the pro, grants and strategic partnerships.
You know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna narrow this down, we're probably only gonna be able to narrow it down by like five or six people from the list and still have enough to, you know, we, we can actually choose people we like the best and not choose everyone. I mean, should we just interview everyone? Spirit selfie, yeah.
I couldn't pick one right now.
I mean, I almost feel like the amount of time we spend trying to figure out how to narrow it down, we might as well just interview everybody and it'll be a long afternoon, but we'll consider everyone and make the decision.
And today.
What do you all think? We're not gonna save that much time by.
We aren't, nah. Today worked out fine too. I mean, I didn't think ten minutes would work.
And did you get our early childhood?
What time do you have?
One to two thirty.
Oh, that's right.
We have horrible housing too.
Poor of a housing too.
That's a tougher day.
Okay, we did it on another day?
It doesn't have to be Tuesday.
No.
We'll get overtime?
Yeah.
Um, so what are we gonna do?
Get an extra.
Get another bag of cheese.
So we're saying.
Y'all can, y'all can, and. We need to have this discussion to, um, in open session during the next meeting when it comes to that information, since it is on the agenda. So we can do that, so it can be discussion, but.
That, okay, in terms of dates, people are saying that Tuesday, two weeks from now, does not work, cause you have other stuff to schedule that.
Yeah, we got an early childhood, poor of a house.
Yeah, we can't, it's too hard to move our.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, we start.
If it goes schedules, we will have an interruption.
It's hard enough to get them.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah.
What about Tuesday to twenty-eighth?
I could do that.
Twenty-eighth. What do you want me to watch, Virginia?
No, I gotta find out.
Okay.
I'm free after twelve that day, but I have two days I can't move that morning.
I'm free that afternoon.
I'm free for that afternoon.
Maybe twenty-one interviews?
And, and just.
Twenty-one interview, every?
Just to give clarity again, um, we will be giving them only a week, and that's not a bad thing, but we had time con, you know, making sure these people were confirmed, but a week, I think is a good amount of time, but we'll have to get on it tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
I was just saying, yeah, we're not voting again.
Yes.
It'd be merciful.
All right, so the afternoon?
Twenty-eighth afternoon, I'm starting. So I put ten. About twentieth, rocking roll.
And, and please, please remember, let's have this same little discussion in the meeting when we get to boards and commissions, so the audience knows as well.
Yeah.
Please.
Okay.
Uh, this.
Go ahead.
The only, the only thing that, let's say several interesting things in this is, there is only one person, one, that is under thirty-five years old. Maybe okay. A lot of thirty-five to fifty-four.
Okay, so it's now four thirty. Um, we had scheduled to do interviews with Lamar and Don this afternoon. I think we just ran out of time, which I apologize for, but, um. The, what if we.
Do it next time.
We can do it at the next meeting.
We'll just do it at the next meeting, okay?
Do it at the next meeting.
Again, we're sorry about that, but we just.
Hey, understood.
We have to go. All right, let's go back out and adjourn this meeting.
We need to clear early chapter.
Yeah, we wanted to. We might as well go ahead to twenty-eighth though.
Is there a motion to, well, first of all, I wanna make an announcement. We, uh, we're scheduled to have a closed session this afternoon to do, uh, personnel reviews between our staff. We ran out of time on that, so we are not gonna have the closed session on the personnel matters this afternoon. We are planning to reschedule that closed session for, um, Tuesday, what's the date, Lamar?
Fourth, February fourth.
Tuesday, February fourth, for that afternoon. We'll confirm the exact time a little bit later, but it'll be that afternoon. All right, uh, we've just completed, um, interviews with, uh, more than a dozen candidates for our Parks Greenways Recreation Advisory Board. Is there a motion to adjourn the specially called meeting for that purpose? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. We'll reconvene for our regularly scheduled meeting at five o'clock.